City Council of Order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Mike McDermott.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbow.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Pro Tem Murkowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
Acquire, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. For our announcements and presentations, I'll immediately hand it over to Sergeant David Polite.
Thank you, President Hart. Thank you for allowing us, as a union, to show the citizens in the council what we actually do throughout the year. We do a lot of fundraising, we do a lot of hard work, and that is, part of that and parcel to that is the fact that we give a scholarship out. We actually give five scholarships out every single year. So first, I want to thank the Chair of the Scholarship Committee and the members for getting through and arduously evaluating all of the applicants we had. There were a lot of applicants for these scholarships, and I feel bad because there were so many phenomenal applicants that it was hard just to choose five. So we actually boiled it down, and if we had our way, we would give everybody a scholarship. But for those of you who don't know, the Westland Professional Firefighters Charity Fund, we have several events through the year like I was talking about, and we raise a large amount of money to give scholarships to our local high school graduates. And we award those five scholarships every year, and those scholarships are named in the honor of Bobby Faust, firefighter Bobby Faust, firefighter Brian Wolke, and Sergeant Todd Stannaway. Since 2005, we've given out more than $54,000 of the Bobby Faust scholarship that's applied towards general education. And then the latter two that I previously mentioned, the Brian Wolke and Sergeant Todd Stannaway, those are full-ride scholarships to a paramedic program, which the Brookshire family, who were past and current firefighters, have started in 2008. We've given out over $275,000 with those scholarships alone. So that brings us over... So that brings us over $329,000. So this is very near and dear to the firefighter's heart because, as firefighters, we're extremely proud, and we place a very, very big emphasis on education. We train every single day. No matter how busy it is, we must get our training in, and we place emphasis back in the community. So when we talk about those last two scholarships that we give, the ones towards emergency services, those are ever so important to us because it continues that process of passing that knowledge from generation of firefighters down to the other generation of firefighters. So we've come leaps and bounds even since when I started, and definitely since some of our other members and the chief, and we've come leaps and bounds in this firefighting and paramedicine industry, and there's a lot of work to do, it's not done. But our firefighters know that by working hard to raise the money that we're going to give out tonight, that helps equip these students and gives them that wind at their back to help them to get into a world that is more complicated, yet more interconnected than even when we started. So our applicants, the reason why we chose a lot of them is because they were community-involved. And we teach here the Compassionate City, we teach here the Community CPR, all of that stuff. So our citizens are involved, or I had to write it down, they're involved with the Norway Citizens Council, they establish community gardens, they've done a lot of work with the elderly. One of the candidates works with the YMCA Rainbow Week for children with cancer, local sports teams, and even CPR training with our own fire department. So it was hard. It was really hard, but we made it through. So this year, the Westland Professional Firefighters are proud to say that we're giving out a new high in total of $21,500 in scholarships tonight. So that's to these students. So with that said, though, I'll end on this, I know our time's limited, but I want to end on the fact, I want to share a few quotes from the awardees that really wowed some of our firefighters, and they show that our future is pretty bright. So one of the awardees said, "With a college degree in my hand, it'll be less about me and more about what I can do for others." Another one said, "I'm setting these goals because I know that what I'm capable of, I can do, and I want to prove it to the world." Another said, "I'm sure that the goals I'm choosing are good for me, but I'm even more certain that what I'm choosing is going to help others." And one of them even said, "When I lead, I'll make sure that no one gets left behind." That's one of our mottos. So these were important to us. So with that being said, I want to invite those awardees up, and then we'll take a quick picture and let you guys get back to your business. That's fine. Do you mind?
It's all you.
Thank you. So the awardees tonight that are here, Trinity Bailey. Madison Inman. DeKayla Taylor. And finally Buster Worm. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Mayor, if you'd like to come down and take some pictures, too. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Sergeant Polite. Thank you, thank you. We'll give those who wish to go out in the hallway and take photos a second. All right. We'll now move to questions raised on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from the council. Is there anyone on my left? Is there anybody on my right? Sir?
First off, congratulations to all the recipients. My name is Edward Pruitt, and I'm speaking on the agenda items that pertain to the pay raises within the collective bargaining agreement. What I'm speaking on specifically, so first of all, I believe that our fire and police, they all deserve to have elevated pay rates. They do a lot in the community, they have trying jobs, they deal with very serious issues at times that they have to take home as well. But what we also need to discuss, which is the hard part, is how we're going to fund this. So I would like to present to, or ask, city council, what are we doing to ensure that this is funded, not just now, but also in the long run? How is it going to play a part in our future projections? And what type of things would have to come into play if indeed we are going to end up in some kind of crisis? What I end up finding in having conversations with council members, the first comment that I received was that this is a great way to attract new members in those areas. I've spent over 20 years as a change agent, and usually pays not that piece, it's usually culture. Again, I do believe our fire and police officers definitely deserve pay rate increases, but we also have to take the hard approach and really look at what's going on. The second piece that was brought to my attention is that there appears to be, within the next few years, that Westland may be in a financial crisis due to not just this piece, but also other spending as well. So I think that it's a good time to also discuss the hard part about funding and future projections. Thank you.
Thank you. Coming back to my left.
I'm assuming you're asking about the consent agenda?
Anything that's on the agenda.
Okay. First off, sorry I missed the first one. I got new hearing aids, there's telecoils in here, for some reason, the loop system in here used to work, and it could be the hearing aids, but I'm hoping to God it's not the loop system, so I don't know when the decision would have been made to make it unaccessable, if that's the case. But my question is Item J, the approval of the, to move something to the property taxes, is this just a shift of something else? I'm assuming, since we're all taxpayers, that the money is not going to move, I mean, it's moving from one thing that we're getting taxed on to another thing, that I'm just concerned that we're trying to do some tricks here to pay for this no-cost leave pickup.
Thanks.
Okay. Coming to my right? Yes?
Good evening. Emily Baumann, Westland resident, and I do also have a question on agenda items, I think I got, not so explicitly, three through seven, all that area. I want to understand if I did, if I did, understand the math correctly, is that there is, for policemen, there's a 3% bump and a 5% increase over four years, which nets to 23%? And I just want to make sure I'm doing the math right, and sorry for understanding. And I agree, we need to have competitive wages, that's a critical thing. So I guess my question is the same, is how are we funding that beyond the four years or beyond the time when ARPA is doing that? It runs out, so that's that question. And then on Consent Calendar Item F, sorry, I need to make my stuff bigger, on the Bucile, I don't know if I say the right agreement, I guess I'm curious if there were other bids for that, and if there were not any other bids when the contract's expiring, I guess I'm usually thinking that you would, you have an opportunity to go out to bid and make sure that you're still, have a competitive contract. And if there was not any other bids, what would be the reason that this organization is the one that you would continue to use, you know, for the residence? Why would we continue to use them if we're not actually looking to see, and make sure that we're not, that we don't have another opportunity to be more competitive? Or whether even the strengths and skills reside within the administration? The other one was on Consent Calendar I regarding the Rotary Canine Corral Fees. My question on that is, we already have licensing fees for our dogs, why is there a membership to use the park? And then why is it so high, rather than simply being like a value to our residents, or even just simply making it $10 per dog? And then if there is still going to be a fee, is it prorated if someone, say, starts in September or something like that? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Anybody on my left? Anybody on my right? All right, we'll close, input on the agenda, move the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Is there anybody in the back, beyond the closed doors, that may not have happened?
I don't know. Can we keep the door open? Is that, thank you, Pro Tem. Is anybody out there? Or is it all photos? Okay. All right. We're going to go, thank you. Yep, absolutely. All right, we'll close, input on the agenda, move the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman Hersberg. Is there support? Supported by Councilman Godbow. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Councilwoman Sampe?
I motion to move Item Number H to New Business.
There's a motion to move Item H to New Business. Is there support? Is there support? Seeing no support, motion dies. Is there any other changes to the consent calendar? Are there any changes to the consent calendar? If they need to be discussed, they need to be moved. So, do you want to go ahead and address them? Steve, can you address Item J, the summer boardups? That was a question.
To the Chair, the boardups, to start, the boardups have nothing to do with the leaf pickup program, but the boardups, there's 22 on tonight's agenda. This has to do with houses that have either broken windows or items that need to be secured to keep the public safe. So there are a total of 22 properties where the cost of doing the boardups are transferred over to the property taxes.
Okay, thank you. Moving over to Devon, Item F, can you please address the questions?
Regarding Item F, the Pacelli contract for the building services agreement is presented to council as a professional services agreement, which does not require the public bid, which obviously requires council approval. This was last approved in 2018, and it has the same rate as the 2018 agreement. And with regarding Item I, this is the approval of the dog park fee schedules. There's two items that are being approved tonight. The first is a $30 household fee, which is for three, up to three dogs, and which is valued, which is for Westland residents only, and the other fee is the additional key fob fee, which is $20 per house, which is an annual fee as well.
Thank you. Coming back to the council, are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held May 15, 2023. Approval of the minutes for the study session held May 17, 2023. Approval of requests to hold a block party event at 8447 North Hubbard that includes a food truck and live music on June 24, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Approval of request from Harbor Freight, 34600 Warren Road, for the use of a 20-foot-by-40-foot tent for sales of products outside their building during maintenance scheduled from June 12 through June 23, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday. Approval of upgrades to the city's existing Adobe Acrobat software application in the amount not to exceed $14,856.56. Approval of renewal of professional services contract with Bucelli Group LLC for services related to carrying out the functions of the building department. Term of the agreement shall be for three years with a two-year extension option in the amount of $909,876 annually. Approval of workers' compensation coverage agreement with Willis Towers Watson Midwest Incorporated for fiscal year 2023-24 and 2025-26. Approval of grant agreement with Presbyterian Villages of Michigan to assist with the development of a PACE program for all-inclusive care for the elderly center on the Village of Westland Campus. Approval to add the Westland Rotary Canine Corral Fees to the administrative fee schedule. And finally, the last item approved on the consent calendar, approval of transfer of hazard slash boardups to the property taxes for the Summer 2023 Tax Bill. Moving to payment of vouchers.
So moved.
Motion from Councilwoman Sampe, supported from Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business, Item 1. Request for a closed study session on June 19, 2023, at 6 o'clock p.m. to consult with legal counsel in connection with LJA Holdings LLC and Westland Campus LLC versus City of Westland, Case Number 23003163CZ, and Quality Roots Incorporated versus City of Westland, Case Number 23003230CZ, and to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state law pursuant to MCL 15268E and H.
Motion from Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Supported from Pro Tem Murkowski. Roll call.
Councilman Godbow.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Pro Tem Murkowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New Business, Item 2. Approval of transfer of ownership of a 2022 Class C license with Sunday sales permit for spirits and mixed spirit drink, Sunday sales permit. Dance entertainment permit and specific purpose permit, which is food, from Larmont LLC located at 175 South Vanoy in Wayne County.
Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman Hersberg, supported from Councilman Godbow. Is a petitioner here? Hey, do you mind coming up? Thank you.
Hi.
I'll ask first, are there any questions from the maker or supporter? Well, first, let me put the horse back in front of the carriage. Is there anything that you'd like to offer, any additional information to the council before we consider this? He's just being interrupting, that's all.
Sorry, I get so nervous in front of people. No, I just, I've lived in the area, it's been a corner bar for a long time. The current owner decided a year ago that she was going to sell it, and I was working there, so I decided that instead of allowing somebody that we didn't know in the neighborhood come in and change what we've been used to, I was able to have the ability to purchase the bar. So I'm hoping to keep it the same, keep the same people, and just give the neighborhood the nice little tavern that I hope it can be.
Wonderful. I'll come back to the maker and supporter. Is there any questions for the petitioner? All right, any other questions from the council for the petitioner? All right. Councilwoman Sampe?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Is this Larkins?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that's what it was. So you said you're keeping the format the same?
Yes. Yep, just changing the name.
Okay. So what's the name going to be?
It's going to be Brown Flannel Tavern.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you for staying here, thank you for acquiring it. I just wanted to confirm the location.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other discussion? Councilman McDermott?
I just want to say thank you for your continued investment. You're right down the street from me, it's my dad's favorite watering hole here in Westland, so chances are, he lives in the apartments right there between Vanoy and Merriman, so he's in there quite a bit, especially on sports Saturdays, so he appreciates you guys.
TMI. I think poor dad just got outed a little bit. All right, all right, all right. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck, congratulations, and Councilman McDermott's dad will be seeing you soon.
All right, thank you.
New Business, Item 3. Approval of successive collective bargaining agreement between the City of Westland and the Westland Lieutenants and Sergeants Association effective May 1, 2023 through December 31, 2027.
Support.
Motion from Pro Tem Murkowski, supported from Councilwoman Sampe. Chief? There was questions, too, regarding the proposed raises on all the items?
Thank you, council. Through the chair, yeah. It was, let me find the right memo here, it was 5% over, 5% a year over four years. Actually, the first year was 2.5, I believe? 2.3? And then 5% successfully after that, for lieutenants and sergeants and POAMs.
Is there any discussion from the council? Councilman Godbow.
Yeah, thanks. I am not going to be supporting the agreement. This is, not that I don't support our police department, our public safety officials, but, you know, this contract, which is strange that it's before the POAM contract on the agenda, because the, a lot of the money that gets tied in and all of the increases are actually in the POAM contract, not necessarily in the lieutenants and sergeants agreement. So, but as was mentioned, it is, being the fact that it's based off of the police officer's contract, which gives a 3.2% increase for May through June 30 of this year, with an additional 5% starting July 1 through the end of that first year till June 30 of next year, and then an additional 5% for the next three years, which is an over 20% increase. And without, you know, this, the contract was, they call it a collective bargaining agreement, and it looked more like a collective giveaway agreement. There was little, if any, concessions on the parts of the union to... concessions on the parts of the union to get this additional 20%. In fact, there was, there's an additional paid holiday in there. There's increases in some other stipends that go along with, in this contract. And we're utilizing one-time money to fund these contracts between the Police Officers Association and the Lieutenants and Sergeants Association. So, once that money runs out, there is, and, and with this, it's, it's about a million dollars a year right now in increase for just the, in the police department. And that is no additional hires during that time. So, the fact that we continue to hear and say that we're understaffed, this contract will not allow for any additional staffing as a result of that. And I have, I've been on this council a long time. I have never seen any collective bargaining agreement that has had 5% increases four years in a row. I don't disagree that we needed to do something upfront to increase the, the pay for the new hires coming in so that we're, we're more competitive. But compounding that over the next three years after that initial increase with an additional 5% is not only, not only does it make us competitive, it puts us in the upper tier of where the, the pays are for police officers in the area. So, I, I am not going to be supporting these contracts, or at least this, this part of it. I'll have more to say on some of the other items as we move along, but it's just not sustainable. You know, and we, you look, there's, there's another agenda item on here for the fire department that I am going to support that condenses down the number of years it takes to, to reach full pay, which is what we did last year for the fire department because, or for the police department, because last year, the chief came to us and said, "We need to squish that down so that we can retain our officers," which we did. You know, and I was very supportive of doing that. The, and at that point in time, our, our former chief said, "We're not that far off on the top pay end with other communities." So, the fact that we're adding over 20% on that top end for those positions with no plan or no idea where that funding is going to come, once we use one-time money to pay for these, is not fiscally responsible, and I can't support it. Thanks.
Pro Tem Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to the police chief, could you give us an update on what our patrol staff numbers are now? Are, are the members of our department?
Sure. We're budgeted for 82. We're at 73 right now, I believe. We have several on-duty injury, so we're really operating in the 60s. We have probably half dozen that are waiting after this meeting that'll probably decide if they're going to go ahead and move forward with an application from our agency or not. And we're, I mean, I feel like we're in crisis mode with that, and I think it will help. When I started here, everybody, no one was a new Westland police officer. We all came from somewhere else. We said, "Wow, look how good Westland has it." And we tested 200 people. And we want to get that back so that we can get back to 82. I'd be, I'd love 82.
Right.
But that's, this is the way we need to do it. That's how we did it 20 years ago through different departments that I've worked at. And I think this is the way to do it for us.
So, chief, could I candidly say that if, you know, if we were to approve this today and we were able to get the department back to 82, that would feel like an increase in manpower?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, yeah, we are understaffed. And, you know, I think, I can see both sides, but here's, here's what I see. Our police departments and our fire departments shoulder risk, right? They shoulder more risk than the administration does. They shoulder more risk than any of us do. And they have to be compensated for what they do. And we have an opportunity to be able to compensate them. We have an opportunity to attract officers to our department to close those gaps. I mean, having a city of our size with over 85,000 residents and many more people who visit on a daily basis, hourly basis, and have only 60 people, and that's not 60 people a day. We don't have 60 officers a day patrolling your streets. You have 60 people in our department available. We have to have a department that is attractive, that people are going to stay here, and people are going to want to come here. And, you know, we, we talk about how 20% is a lot. Well, you know, the price of my milk and eggs has gone up a lot, too. And, you know, when we start looking at having public safety personnel working for $11 an hour, I, I don't think that makes anybody feel good. I don't want to see us having career police officers and firefighters having to work second jobs to make ends meet. That, that's a recipe for disaster. They get injured on these second jobs. They can't fulfill their commitments to the City of Westland. Now we're looking at overtime budgets that are sky high. So, you know, it seems like a lot, and I get that. But in the scheme of things, it's going to save all of the residents a great deal of pain and misery when we have the right-sized departments, when our response times are in line with ISO ratings, which affects your home insurance, which affects your pocketbook. So, I'm in support of this. And, you know, quite frankly, it's been far too long that the ship has gone off course, and we have the opportunity to fix it today. Let's do it.
Thank you. Sorry. Mayor?
Thanks, President Hart. I just wanted to jump in briefly and just tell the folks that are in the audience and folks at home. It's been a lot of discussion on this. We've had lengthy budget sessions. We've had study sessions. This room is just as packed as it is tonight for the study sessions. We were here for a good hour and a half, two hours, where a lot of this stuff was discussed. You heard a few terms talked about, you know, it's not sustainable, forecast, so we're kicking the can down the road, you know, all that kind of stuff. Other terms I heard during the budget sessions were, you know, ARPA, using one-time money and lost revenue. As a reminder to Westland, Westland residents, we received over $26 million in lost revenue, and all we're asking for is a little piece for our public safety. There's going to be folks that say we can't afford it. How can we not afford it? I mean, think about it. How can we not afford it? That's what this money was for, lost revenue due to COVID. I talked with the council at, at one of the sessions. I'd said, "Most of the, the mayors I'm speaking with, other communities, they put all their money into lost revenue category." Talked about kicking the can down the road. Well, we have kicked the can down the road for too long, and I say we stop the bleeding. Let's fix this recruitment and retention issue with our police and fire departments right now. We were great once. We'll be great again.
All set, Mayor?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Sampson.
Well, thank you. So, Councilwoman Rakowski and I speak a lot, so she took a lot of the words out of my mouth. But I really feel at the study session that we did, I mean, we laid a lot of it out. And I'm going to say this again, and this is not to be derogatory, but I know I've said it to the police and they laugh. When you pay crap, you get crap. That's just all there is to it. We are not retaining and attracting the best and the brightest. We have to offer a competitive salary to get people to come here. Westland used to be the cream of the crop, and we had people on a waiting list. We don't have that anymore. We are pulling teeth to get people to come here. So for us to vote down an increase, I mean, to me, I don't support that. We have to retain them. We have to attract them, both police and fire. If you ask me, "What are your most important things in life? Who do you feel needs to be rewarded?" Police, fire, teachers. They're the ones that protect, teach, serve. I hold them up on the highest standard. So, for us this evening to figure out in the budget, this money, I think Mayor mentioned it, this money is to replace our lost revenue. And we lost our, our public service people in the, in that efforts, too. People went elsewhere. They, they pay more money. So, this is getting us back competitive. That's getting us back into the same mantra of keeping the brightest and the best. So I will be supporting it this evening, and I know that we'll figure out based on additional incomes. And a few of my colleagues were talking about new homes that are going to be coming into Westland. There's, we're not broke. I just want to address that. I know it got brought up. So, and culture only goes so far. It was brought up like, "Well, you know, if you, if you have a great culture, you don't understand if you think that a culture is going to save a department. You haven't talked with the police and firemen. They're not staying here because the culture's fantastic. It's great. It may hold them here, but that's not going to keep them here. It's just not. I'm sorry." Our culture and our police and fire departments are fantastic, and that's because of leadership. But at the same time, they're not staying here. That's not going to keep them here. It's not. And they're not seeking out because Westland has the best culture. They are fantastic individuals, but to create a good culture, sometime you need incentive, which is pay. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, but again, I will be supporting.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any discussion from the council? Councilman Godbell.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to clarify. I am not against an increase for the police department, okay? I said that upfront, okay? I, and the, the first three and a half and five make us competitive, for the most part, with the surrounding communities. It's the three fives after that that, to me personally, seem excessive. As I said, I have never seen a contract with five-year, or 5% increases three years in a row. Actually, this contract is four years in a row. As a matter of fact, our firefighters are working on a 2% increase as part of their contract. So, it's, it's not that I'm not supportive of our police department. Yes, we need to be competitive. But at, at this point, and particularly when you look at some of the other things that end up going along, in particular with this lieutenants and sergeants contract, is that all the staff gets increases, okay? From the mayor to every director over the life of this contract is going to get a 20% increase. And because they're all tie-barred into this agreement, and I brought this up, we've done nothing. Matter of fact, when we're talking about the budget, we had three budget study sessions that, on a, on Saturdays. We had no additional study sessions. We've got one council member that's been on council now for almost six months, okay? Another one that's been through one budget cycle. And we've had no deep dives, no look into some of these issues, like the tie bar. And there's an item on here to remove the council salary from the tie bar, but none of the others. So, there's more than just this contract that makes it distasteful from my perspective. I don't disagree that we need to, to be competitive in the police department, and we need to give these guys an increase. I just believe this contract is excessive. The, the connections and the increases throughout the entire city budget that's part of this is excessive. And because we're not 20% behind on paying our directors or some of the other staff that's, that are automatically tie-barred to this agreement. So, that's why I'm not supporting it.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbell.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Pro Tem Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampson.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item four. Approval of successor collective bargaining agreement between the City of Westland and the Westland Police Officers Association effective May 1, 2023 through December 31, 2027.
Motion from Pro Tem Rakowski. Councilman Hersberg, is that support? Supported from Councilman Hersberg. Chief, do you have anything to offer?
Thank you, Council President. Again, it was just what we just discussed, the 3.2 and then 5, 5, 5, and 5.
Figure I'd give you your shot at it, so. All right. Is there any discussion? Pro Tem?
Thank you, Council President. So, more of the same. You know, again, we have a police department that needs help recruiting and retaining our talent. You know, again, we're looking at 23.2% over the life of the contract, which is just bringing them up to speed to the other departments in the area. And, you know, again, these are the individuals that shoulder the risk in our community, and they should be paid accordingly.
Anything from the supporter? Any discussion from the council? Any discussion from Councilwoman Sampson? Did you have discussion?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. So, I will be in support of this, this evening, just similar to the information that I shared previously. I just want to thank POAM, P, ugh, it's been a long night. I'm sorry. You guys know, POAM. I want to thank you guys for working on this contract. I know you've been working really hard, and thanks for your patience, and I really hope this fixes our retention. I think it will. So, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Councilman McDermott?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things here. I understand the heartburn that using one-time funding on reoccurring costs can have. I certainly get that, and it has to be acknowledged, and I think we have to have the conversation long term about whether it's a public health and safety mileage or whatever this looks like. I think we're going to have to put on our big boy pants and have that conversation, big girl pants, too. But if you, if you were to take the numbers in the contract for the POAM contract and the LSNA, and you replace those financial numbers with run volume, we would be laughably off the charts. Laughably off the charts. How much our officers, and same thing goes for our fire department, to laughably off the charts how much we are working compared to other communities. And if somebody has the opportunity, and I work in HR for a living, I work as a recruiter for a living, so I negotiate contracts with folks who are looking to get jobs at, where I work at, at certain communities. But if you were to present somebody, you can make $96,000 in Canton Township, or you can make $88,000 in Farmington Hills, or you can come to Westland and you can do double the run volume, have more risk. You put yourself at significantly greater risk, and you can come in, you can make 78, 80, 81, $82,000 if we only did a, you know, a 2% or 3% increase. I don't know anybody that's going to come and say, "Yeah, let me go to Westland as a, as a new officer where I'm going to cap out at 81 or $82,000 a year and, and have double the run volume and put myself at significantly higher risk." That's, that's just not how it works today. And on top of that, we have a compounding problem of, this is, you know, not 20 years ago where we used to get 150 people on a civil service exam. We get two or three or four people, or sometimes we don't get anyone at all. And just because we get two or three or four people doesn't mean we want to hire everybody on there. And we've unfortunately seen some of our neighboring communities, you know, I hate to say it this way, but scrape the bottom and hire anybody that applies. Or they maybe get people right out of the academy, and then they work there a couple of years, contract shop, and go wherever they can get the best contract. We saw a horrific incident several years ago of police brutality in the City of Inkster where a previously fired Detroit police officer was hired by the City of Inkster because they were so desperate to hire anybody in their community. And unfortunately, we saw a very high-profile case there where that officer was fired from Detroit, went into Inkster, and also committed a, had a situation there with Mr. Floyd Dent, and who was just driving home from work. And what we're told by the Michigan Municipal Risk Assessment, MMRA, our city's insurance agency, is one of the number-one liabilities is lawsuits related to law enforcement. And that oftentimes, unfortunately, occurs due to communities hiring police officers who are not up to par. And we want to be a community where all of our officers are up to par, and where somebody who's going out on patrol feels that the partner that they're with, the person that they're with out there can do a good job to keep them safe and to keep the people do a good job to keep them safe and to keep the people that they're interacting with safe as well. So, I certainly understand the heartburn using one-time ARPA funding on reoccurring expenses. I certainly understand the need to have a long-term conversation about where we're getting the funding from, what that's going to look like long-term, to make sure that we're stable. Because I know that our police officers, our firefighters, don't want to bankrupt the city, because if, if we do fall into financial hard times, this is going to affect them too, and we're going to have to come clawing back and saying, oh, hey, sorry, we can't do that contract or those changes that we, we just made. But we've already reached the crisis point, when we're down to 68 officers and we're budgeted for 82. We've reached a crisis point when we have double and triple the run volume of some of our neighboring communities. And when you compound that with a really tight labor market where there's not a whole lot of slack, right, and people can contract shop pretty much anywhere they want in southeast Michigan, you know, that's something that we have to stay on top of. And then, I think the other thing is, we can't look at these changes in a vacuum, and they can't be entirely static. We're going to make these changes today, but tomorrow, Livonia and Farmington Hills and Novi and South Lyon and Warren and Sterling Heights and Taylor and Woodhaven and Ann Arbor and all across southeast Michigan, they're going to be reevaluating their contracts when their, when their CBAs come up, or they're going to be looking at LOUs, letters of understanding, for their communities as well, and they're going to be going, well, hey, we just saw what Westland did. If we have the funding necessary in our community to do this, we're going to do it. There are some communities where unfortunately the bottom has fallen out, and I feel horrible for those communities, and they can't make these changes. And that's where they're stuck in a situation where they're somebody else's training ground, or they're taking police officers, firefighters that don't meet the qualifications in, in other communities or score at the bottom of the civil service exam. And when we talk about, you know, the city falling behind, I mean, I think we've had over a decade of concessions where the bottom did fall out in this city, where these guys have been in negotiating room and they have made significant concessions on both sides, police and fire, because the money just wasn't there, because the bottom legitimately really fell out. And I understand, we don't ever want to get back into that situation. And I understand that we don't ever want to have to come back or have the unions come back to us and say, hey, we have to make concessions and we have to claw things back. So, I get it. I understand the animus, but there's, there's been a decade of concessions that have been made, and there's been a decade of, of falling behind, as evidenced by the fact that we've fallen from, you know, over 100 officers to 82, and from 82 down to 68, well, 73, but 68 when you count all the folks who are on leave or out sick or are deployed overseas. So, we do have to have a serious conversation about long-term funding what we're doing here, and we can't kick the can. I think we have to have a conversation about the LOC C and some of the tie bars as well. But I would hate to not do this, and then six months from now, we're back where we were in December with the chief coming to us saying, hey, I've got 10 men and women ready to jump ship to wherever else because, you know, Livonia just updated their contract, or Farmington Hills just updated their contract. And the same thing goes with, with our fire department as well. So, I will be in support of this as I was with the LSA contract and the, the fire changes too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? I'm happy to support it. I'll ask one more time. Is there any other discussion from the council? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout?
No.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Pro Tem Murkowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe?
Yes.
President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item five. Approval of letter of understanding between the Westland Professional Firefighters and the City of Westland to set forth changes to the current 2020 through 2026 collective bargaining agreement between the Westland Professional Firefighters and the City of Westland as it relates to the wage tables and prior service credit towards steps on the wage table.
Support.
I have a motion from Councilman McDermott, supported from Pro Tem Murkowski. Any, anything from the maker?
Just real quick, thank you, Council President. I want to thank the negotiating team who came before the council and the chief as well. On these changes here, I think they're going to be significant to help us retain some of our folks who may be looking elsewhere and saying, you know, geez, if Dearborn or Farmington Hills has a four-year top out and Westland has a seven-year top out, I'm going to, I'm going to have a family to support, or I'd like to start a family, so I'm going to consider that and where I go. So, I think these are necessary changes. It would have been nice to do them a little bit sooner, but hey, it's better than, better late than never, as they say. And I think that this will help us be more competitive long-term. We still have a whole nother question that we have to address. If you, if you have the opportunity to ever look at, they posted on the Westland Professional Firefighters Facebook page sometimes, the run volume that our guys are doing. We have a huge, significant run volume problem that which lends itself into staffing, which we have to address after fixing this year tonight. But I think one step at a time, and I'm glad that we're doing this and glad to be in support of it. Thank you.
Anything from the supporter?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Yes, I'll be in support of this as well. I think the seven-year graduated scale is incredibly antiquated. There, there's hardly any communities that take seven years for you to get to your top pay as a firefighter. To the gentleman, the councilman's point, we do have staffing issues. We're, we're working on addressing the staffing issues within the, the fire department. There's been a study that's been ordered and that's in process. And I think all of us up here, as far, including, excuse me, the firefighters and their union, look forward to seeing those results, because I'm sure that it'll tell us that we are understaffed. You know, I think, again, you know, this is a letter of understanding to adjust that portion of their collective bargaining agreement. It, it's not generally a good idea for a union to be coming to the negotiating table and asking to renegotiate their contract. You know, so it's wonderful to see that there is a great deal of faith between the union and the administration to get this portion of their contract in line with what surrounding areas are doing. The only challenge that I have is that when we get to the actual budget, there, it doesn't seem to be sufficient pay to carry the firefighters that we do currently have within our ranks for the long term. And, and that's, you know, I believe something that, you know, come November and October, when we can actually do budget amendments and we'll have that fire study agreement, we'll be able to readdress that. That does give me heartburn, so, to use our common phrase today. But other than that, you know, there's absolutely no reason why a public safety officer in police or fire should have to wait seven years to top out in their career. That's ridiculous.
Mayor?
Thanks, Council President. Bottle up everything they said and just have me say it, because that's pretty much what I was going to say. So, but I do want to personally thank, or David went, there he is. David Polite, the president of the firefighters' union, his entire negotiating team, Rich DJSC in the back, Kevin Caldwell, Anthony LaShodis, my chief of staff, Mike Ready, our personnel department, Stephanie Field, and our city attorney's office. When David first became elected president of the union, he came to me, we had a, we had a breakfast or a lunch, kind of started a discussion there, and had more discussions as we went on, and at times a little bit heated, but you know what? We, we worked through those, worked through those issues and became to a professional agreement. And once we engaged with city council and explained the issues at hand, as Councilwoman Sampe said, the seven-year top out just needed to go. So, I want to personally thank you guys for working with us. I know it took a little bit longer than you wanted. He was calling, texting every day, when are we going to get this done? So, I appreciate your patience on, Andrew, yeah, they were saying it too, but I appreciate your patience on that, and I'm looking forward to hopefully getting this passed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. By the way, Pro Tem Murkowski said that, so just clarifying on her behalf.
Sampe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, Councilwoman Sampe?
Councilwoman Sampe said that needs to go too. So, there you go. We've both said it then. I also wanted to thank the, the bargaining team as well, too. You know, I've been speaking a lot with fire, and I really appreciate just all the candor to you guys. I mean, police and fire work so hard, but I think, you know, this is the first step. I'm looking at your guys', I think, union president, Polite, and I talked, and the first time we talked on the phone, we had like an hour conversation, and one of the things he talked about was the run volume. And he said, you know, 15,138 was our run volume. I made the notes. I brought it up on my phone. So, that's one of the things, too, that, you know, tonight is the first step, but I know that there's further conversation down the road. And I really do appreciate you guys working so hard at this first step. I know it's going to solve maybe a few problems. But, you know, I think that we have other conversations down the road, and I'll be in support of this tonight. So, thank you, fellas, for lining the room and just working so hard. We appreciate you.
Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, I, I'm supportive of this letter of understanding. And, you know, it's, it's odd. We, we talk about this, the run volume and the, the need for more bodies, and we're doing this study to find out and get an appropriation or get a number where our department should be at. And believe me, I have unfortunately had to utilize the services of our fire department multiple times. So, when I see that based off of the budget, and again, we're, all of this ties into the budget, right? So, we're, we just approved 20% increase for the fire, or for the police department with no staffing increases. We've, we're now shrinking down, which we need to do, similar to what we did for the police department last year. We probably should have done this last year when we did the police department. But their staffing level goes down by 13 bodies. Now, where's the money going to come from for doing those bodies? Where's the money going to come from for whatever this study that we're paying $80,000, $50,000, $40,000? When they come back and say, we should be at 80 or 90 firefighters, there, there's none left. And that's, that's very concerning. So, you know, we, we, all of these numbers get tied together at some point in time. And unfortunately, I've been here when the can got kicked down the road, when we had to go to you guys and say, look, we need concessions. We had to tier the pension multipliers. We had to tier salaries because we were out of money. And, you know, I've been through this twice now in my time on the council. And it's unfortunate, but I can see us heading down this same path again. And, you know, our public safety individuals are the ones that take the biggest brunt of, because they're the largest amount out of our general fund between police and fire, probably accommodates over 75% of our budget. Okay? And it's just, you know, I'm sorry, you know, that, I, I'm, I'm not sorry that we're doing this. I'm sorry that we're not going to have adequate funding in the future to make sure that our numbers should be where they should be, both, in both police and fire. Because, you know, there's only so much money to go around. You got to divide that by the ideal number that you want to have in your departments. And again, during the budget, we took no serious look at where we might come up with other money to help supplement some of these items in the budget. That's all I have. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion from the council? Councilwoman Sampe, did you want to use your second speak?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I don't know if that is correct information, that we won't have enough money to fund down the road. I think that's pretty incorrect in terms of the assumption of the income that we have coming through in addition to other projects that we're working on and developments that we're working on. I guess I have a question, though, through the chair to chief, since the budget obviously reflects your department. Can you please clarify on the 13 firefighters that you will be quote-unquote losing? So, can you please give light on that?
Yeah, through the chair. I, that was the 13 positions that you guys funded in March, right? Safer, which is a, is a federal grant. We had 13 employees on that grant, which expired in March, which you guys then funded, which was really the first of three parts that we kind of needed done to retain the guys that we currently have. So, that put us up to 75 firefighters. And then that's where we're budgeted through, I think, the end of the year, which then you guys are going to decide what to do after that. But I think you're waiting for that study to get done, which will, which will be done before then.
So, I think it comes down to is, we're not losing them. We need to understand what our staffing looks like in order for us to proceed. It could come back potentially, the study that we need 20. It could come back more.
Correct.
So, I think at this point right now, your overtime budget, just to clarify, is rather high. Is that correct?
Expenditures?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, part of that is because your staff is working more hours because we don't have the staff to work the normal shifts. So, people need to work over. Is that correct?
Correct. So, we're budgeted for 75. We currently have 69. We have at least five, I know, that are waiting for this to get approved tonight from outside departments that I, I believe will be applying here. On the other side of that, however, we have at least that many that are waiting for this to pass to decide whether or not they're going to stay here or not. So, we're, we are stuck kind of, I like Chief Dolly's, in, in kind of crisis mode right now. If this passes, yeah, I see us filling those 75 positions. If it fails, I see us dropping down. We're, we're at 69. We have 65 firefighters that are actually performing a duty somewhere in training school. That would drop down, assuming below 60 fairly shortly.
Okay. Thank you, Chief, for that synopsis and information, too. I think that just kind of gives confirmation on where we look at in terms of staffing numbers and overtime numbers. Sometimes with the public not having the budget in front of them, they don't really understand the full picture. So, I appreciate that.
Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion from the council? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Pro Tem Murkowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe?
Yes.
President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business. Item six. Adoption of prepared resolution to decline any city council pay raises for the period June 5, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
So moved.
So, motion from Councilman McDermott. Is there support? I will pass the gavel to the Pro Tem, and now I will support.
Okay. Sorry. Had to write my notes. Is there any comment from the maker?
None.
And is there any comment from the supporter?
Not at this time.
Okay. And is there any comment from any council members? Okay. I think Councilman Godbout moved first. Okay. Then Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you. So, I will not be in support of this this evening. There actually is a reason why. So, I feel that this was a political maneuver. It was strictly political. It never came up in budget sessions. We never discussed this. It was just literally called and told, hey, this is what we're doing. So, it actually is in the current budget, and, you know, really looking at if we do not proceed this way, it needs to be amended. So, to get perspective, it's 0.006% of the overall budget. We all make hypothetically, just so you know, I'm sure you can look it up, less than $20,000. So, really what it comes down to when we're working 20, 25 hours, we're making 15 bucks an hour. Again, it has nothing to do with pay, but it's not a savings. It's a $5,500 savings, basically, for the city on a $70 million budget. So, I really felt it was political. I know individuals brought it up as a political maneuver, so I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. Well, this is, uh, this was brought up during the budget study sessions because, excuse me, I didn't interrupt you when I was speaking.
Let's have order.
Uh, I brought up the fact that our pay was tie-barred to the lieutenants and sergeants' contract, just like all of these other positions that are tie-barred, that are getting these increases. increases. I'm supporting not doing this. We should have had another discussion during that time to look at all of these positions that are tie barred and what's competitive salaries for those. If you look, and, and this is no offense, we have some great directors. We, we have some young, talented, uh, you know, in, in some regards, I'm sure they're being sought after by other communities, okay? And we need to be competitive, okay? But when I looked at the numbers from across the state and even local communities on what we're paying, we're not 20% off. Okay? Which is now going to be part of their pay scale because they're all tie barred in together for the, over the next four years. Just like the council pay would have, and, and again, this was only a one year. It's not the full four years that the contract that we just approved is. Okay? So unless council takes action again next year, the pay will go up automatically. These, this, among other items, are things that I brought up during the budget session. So yes, I'm going to support this not taking an increase, okay? But again, we didn't go far enough. We didn't do anything. We did nothing. Here's the budget. Have a nice day. We had some, we had some discussions, but nothing changed in the budget. And this is one item that I'm 100% positive I brought up during the budget sessions. So to say I didn't, that it wasn't brought up is not accurate. So I will be supporting not taking an increase for council, but we should have done more. And we didn't.
I'm sorry. Just so, just so you know what I'm doing, we have a monitor that says whose microphone's lit. And it's not in the center of here, so I get to scooch over. So do I have other? I can't see.
No, you just open it to the council.
Okay. All right. I believe Councilman Hersberg has indicated he has comments. Okay.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Yeah, it was brought up at the budget meeting, but there was no discussion on council being excluded from this. There was a question on budgetary numbers, on who exactly is tied to the deputy chief and how that's going to affect the overall budget. I don't recall any conversation about just excluding from council. So I'm really not sure how this just came on the agenda. Usually you need three council members or what have you, but that conversation didn't take place. So I won't be in support either. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmen. Do either of the fine councilmen have comment? And is there any other comment to be made? Oh, Councilwoman Sampe.
Yeah, so that's exactly, thank you, Councilman Hersberg, what I was going to say. This, this was just brought up recently. This was not discussed at a council study session, not at a budget session. This was brought up a few weeks ago, that this is what council was going to do. It was never discussed. It was brought up potentially what was tie barred, but it was never discussed that this is what we were going to do, or this is what we should do. So that's to clarify my question. Again, it comes down to a political maneuver. If we have council members that want to write a check back and donate their salary, you know, since they don't want to take it, that's fine, too. But unfortunately, this was just brought up. So that's kind of, you know, agreeing with you. That's kind of how it was brought on our plate.
Right. My turn. So I, I, my feelings on the whole thing is just that because we're using ARPA funds to plug the revenue deficits in our budget, and this is part of our budget, and we all have had copious amounts of discussion this evening about using one-time funds for, you know, salaries and things of that nature. When we, you know, first, one of the very first things we did with our ARPA funds was to pay our police officers, our firefighters, DPW workers, and other members of the community hero pay, right? Of our, not our community, but of our staff. And city council was exempt from that, as we should be. Okay? So I think, and, you know, I had to sit with this as well. You know, I got the agenda when you guys got it, and I sat with it. And I kind of feel like if we have to utilize those ARPA funds to make sure that we are, you know, rightsizing our public safety, then, you know, once again, you have your council kind of benefiting from that, and that, that doesn't need to be happening. So for me, you know, I don't see it so much as a political move as it is someone wanted to make a statement, and they chose to do that through the agenda. And, you know, that's what the agenda's for. We're supposed to be bringing forth ideas and concepts and voting on them and having discussions about them. So, you know, let's like just try to not say that it's just a political thing. Maybe it is. It's not my item, but, you know, and I think a lot of your council colleagues up here, and I know for, for a fact, you, you don't name majority of it back anyways, right? Like, we, we try to support all of the different community organizations and fundraisers and things like that for, for students and golf. And it, you just need to name it. The scholarships this evening. So, you know, let's just try to have some good debate, but like, let's not personalize it. And, and let's not necessarily try to command what other people should be doing with their funds. So that's all I have to say.
Any more? Any dissent?
We need a roll call.
Roll call.
Just as a reminder to council, in order for this resolution to pass, it does require two third, two thirds affirmative vote. Councilman Gabba.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rokowski. Uh, Councilwoman Sampe.
No.
President Hurd.
Yes.
By a four-three vote that requires five affirmative votes, the motion fails.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, I am retrieving the gavel from the pro tem.
Thank you. New business, item seven, adoption of 2023, 2000 through 2026 proposed budget, 2023 through 2029 capital improvement plan, and 2023 to 2024 spreading of the millage rates. A public hearing on the budget was held May 1, 2023.
Is there a motion? Motion from pro tem, supported from Councilwoman Sampe. Mayor?
Thank you, President Hurd. Good evening, everyone. This agenda item includes a resolution to approve the city's millage rates that will be leveled, that will be leveled, levied, excuse me, for the next fiscal year, the three-year budget from July 1, 2023 through July, excuse me, June 30, 2026, along with the city's capital improvement plan from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2029. Oh, that's wrong. Is that right? Is that right, Dan, on the capital improvement plan, 2029? Okay. The proposed budget was proposed, provided to council on April 1. Since then, there have been three study sessions, study sessions to discuss the budget, and a public hearing was held right here in the council chambers on May 1. The three-year budget is a balanced budget for each of the three fiscal years that council will be approving tonight. It preserves the city's unassigned fund balance each of the three years. The millage rates for the city have not increased from prior year. This budget incorporates all of the recently negotiated contracts and the contracts that were approved tonight, so we appreciate that. Some of the highlights of the three-year budget includes the following: utilizing the city's American Rescue Plan Act dollars for lost revenue from the COVID-19 pandemic. It provides funding for the annex at Nankin Park project and will be paid from the TIFA fund. Includes retention and recruitment efforts for the police and fire departments. Provides funding of 13 firefighters until the results of the fire department's comprehensive organizational study is reviewed, so we're not losing 13 firefighters. It contributes an additional $500,000 each year towards the retiree healthcare liability. Continues the $150,000 each year for the successful voluntary retiree healthcare settlement program to help further reduce the city's overall liability. Budget also provides funding for the special pickup and the new leaf pickup programs. It provides expenditures of $13.3 million over three years, which is, 4.8 million will be used in year one for road repairs on 56 major and local roads within 15 neighborhoods throughout our city. It also provides funding of $5 million over five years for the new sidewalk replacement program. Has expenditures of $13.9 million over three years, which 4.6 million will be expended this year in year one for water and sewer improvements to the city's 611 miles of water and sewer systems. It also includes $4.7 million over three years of capital investments throughout the city. This includes a new roof at the court, water and sewer equipment, and capital investments listed in the capital improvement plan. This was a collaborative effort between the department heads, the administration, and three study sessions with city council. I appreciate, there was a lot of good dialogue. I appreciate all the questions. And I know many of you came in and had one-offs with our staff. I want to thank my staff for making themselves available to work with you. A lot of hard work went into this three-year balanced budget, and we hope to see it approved tonight.
Thank you. I'll move to the maker. Is there anything from the maker?
Not at this time.
Anything from the supporter? Any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the council? Councilman Hersberg?
Thanks, Council President. So I won't be in support of the budget. There's a lot of things in it that I'm not comfortable with. You know, the votes on the contracts that we just did puts us in a hard position. And we are going to have to be looking at a millage, maybe, maybe not. You know, that's going to be our job to, to fill in those holes in the budget to keep you guys hired, staffed. The budget numbers are with current employees. And as you heard from the police department, you know, we're about 10 people short. So if we do hire those 10, that's going to be another million dollars. This budget is okay for the three years, but as soon as that three years is up, we're looking at over a million dollar deficit. We're looking at the fund balance shrinking. So I, I can't support that. And then it was brought up about the discussion at the budget meetings. I mean, we didn't change a thing. I mean, the only thing that was an option for council to change is we discussed, are we going to paint two or four pickleball courts at the senior center? You know, I, I've been through a lot of these budget sessions. I was pretty disappointed with how it went this year. I want to hear from other council members if they have anything. I'll chime back in later. So.
Okay. Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion from the council? Councilman Gabba?
Sure. Yeah, I've, I've already mentioned a few of the reasons why I'm not going to support the budget. Councilman Hersberg touched on a couple of those as well. You know, we heard the, the free sidewalk replacement program at the tune of a million dollars a year. Nothing is free. Okay? It just, the cost comes from something else. I talked to a resident over the weekend that's been trying to get three slabs in front of her place fixed for over a year now and can't get the city to come out to repair it. And she knows that she's going to, before this program gets implemented, she knew that she was going to have to pay for those. As most residents that have ever had slabs replaced in front of their house, they, they are either built, they can either do it themselves, they can have the city do it, and the city will either add it to their tax rolls, or they can pay it upfront. They, we give them time to make those payments over several cycles. Okay? So to say that it's free, it's not free. Okay? It, it, it's a no cost to the individual that's getting the benefit of not having to pay what they always paid for in the past. Okay? So the, the leaf pickup program, and yes, it's extremely popular with a certain segment of our population, somewhere between 35 and 40% of our population. But there's also, we're estimating a half a million dollars was, I believe, the number that was brought up during the study session. We don't have any hard data on if that's what the cost is going to be. We're going to divide up the city into five zones, and supposedly, we're going to pick them up different ways in each one of those zones to see what works and what doesn't. Doesn't sound like consistent service across the community. And even some of those hardcore people that love this program, when I explain to them that the money that's being used to fund this is part of the millage that they voted in to do the curbside recycling, and that because we were able to renegotiate our contract at the landfill where we take our trash by $10 a ton, we, we would have, we had the option, and I brought it up during the study session, of rolling back the millage, lowering the taxes for 100% of the taxpayers for the period, instead of implementing a new program that we're not sure how it's going to work, we're going to do it in different ways, and we're not sure of the costs. But it's a great election year sell, right? It, it's just, again, let's not look at what's in the best interest of all of the taxpayers or all the residents. Let's let the squeaky wheel drive our, our decision-making process. And again, the, the raises and, and stuff that go on throughout this budget, I've already gone on ad nauseam about, so I, I won't say anymore on that. But there, there's a whole lot of stuff. And again, we didn't have any discussions on, you know, other ways. You know, are there other efficiencies in departments that we can have to try and save money to pay for some of this stuff? No, we got money. We got, we got free money from the Fed, so we're, we're just going to spend it. It's, it's unfortunate because we, we really didn't have, as, as Councilman Hersberg said, it was basically, here's the budget. And, you know, I have to assume, knowing full well, that they had the four votes to get the budget passed, and it's going to fly through, and everything will be hunky-dory until we hit the wall again. You know? I've been through hitting the wall twice. I guess maybe I'll be around long enough to see us hit the wall a third time. So that's all I have.
Councilwoman Sampe?
Thank you. It was brought up about the leaf pickup and the sidewalk program. I've been doing a lot of door knocking and speaking with our residents, and I'll tell you what, they are so excited about that. It's, it's about a $10 savings. And when you ration it out, we ask them, you know, what is your feedback? You know, what do you think about the leaf pickup program? And it's been very overwhelming. They are so excited about it. Actually, one of the residents that I went to, they approached me. They're like, hey, are we doing a leaf pickup program? And what about the sidewalk program? So those were two initiatives that they were super excited about. So I, I think it's going to be very successful. We've gotten quite a bit of survey results back with a pretty high participation of support, too. So I'm really excited about that. I know at the study sessions, too, we had asked about, you know, suggestions on the budget. There wasn't any suggestions on where we should cut or what we should change in terms of the departments. So I know that was something that, you know, was brought up, but I will be supporting this budget. I do feel like it's going to set us up for some initiatives that we've waited for quite some time that we haven't done. So I look forward to supporting it this evening.
Pro tem?
Thank you, Council President. So I, I think that there is this perception that your city council gets together and breaks out their calculators and spreadsheets and figures out where all the dollars go. And that's not how the budget process works. that's not how the budget process works. And so we are presented a budget, we do discuss the budget, sometimes we debate the budget. And, you know, when, so we do have, a lot of times there are questions, so, you know, okay, you don't like that, where are you going to get the money from? That's a question I have posed to people. You know, where are you going to get the money from? Well, I don't know. So we don't have a solution, right? So if we can't offer a solution, then we can't task the finance department at going and finding that solution, right? So if we say, you know, we're spending too much money on widgets, you know, the whozits are underfunded, if we could say, well, you need to take the, you know, money out of there and put it over there, then the finance team can go and do that. But when we don't give them any direction, right, and nobody sat there, no one, myself included, and said, we want to take the money from this category and put it over here, and over here, and over there. No one did that. We made a lot of commentary, we made a lot of statements of disgust, we made some statements of support, we had questions, which for the most part were answered. But the idea that we're actively participating in the shaping of this budget, that's not factual. It just isn't. And it, it isn't, because every time somebody made a statement and we asked, where are you going to get that money from, they didn't have an answer, right? They didn't say, well, fire's not getting enough money, so we should take it from, I'm just going to make up something, from the general government fund. Nobody said that. Nobody, nobody offered any solutions. But everybody can sit here and, you know, I'm not in love with the budget. I haven't loved it since April 1st. That was my birthday present this year, the budget, you know? And, you know, we have a three-year budget. It's a budget, right? But what we have to do is we have to be able to function as a government. We have to be able to function as a city. And for myself, I said, I'm going to look at the three-year budget as the one-year budget, with the other two years as a forecast of what's coming down the pike, so that we can prepare, adjust accordingly for those future years. Not in love with it, but I know we need the services, right? I'm not in love with the fact that when we were given our ARPA allocation way back when, that we could have put all $26 million right into the budget. That was never even a discussion for any of us. It would be great to be having an extra $26 million in the fund balance. We wouldn't even be having a conversation about shortages. Probably wouldn't even be having conversations about the future M-word of millage, right? But that wasn't even something that was given to us, and that wasn't this administration, it was the previous one. So, you know, I think the biggest thing is, for me, am I in love with it? Am I shouting from the mountaintops that we have the best budget? No. But is this a budget that can keep us functioning as a safe community? A community that has services available to the residents who do pay taxes, because if we like it or not, the ARPA money wasn't a magic gift, right? It's either a taxpayer dollar, or you're seeing it in your inflation, there's your ARPA money, right? To your point, nothing's free. And we can make a plan. And so that's where I've gotten myself to, okay? So we've got a conservative forecast that looks like we're going to be dipping into fund balance. It's a forecast. It may be, it may come true, it may be worse, it may be better, but regardless, we have to be able to function. We have a responsibility to protect the residents, we have a responsibility to protect your property, we have a responsibility to make sure that your insurances aren't going any higher than they have to be, because we're not providing the right services for you. And then we have the responsibility to sit collectively with the administration and actually have those conversations about where are the, where's the revenue going to come from? And we've asked, we've asked that question, where's the revenue going to come from? And it's kind of the answer, the stock answer is, well, it's a forecast, well, you know, I don't want to say, it's not verbatim, don't worry about it, but it was kind of like, it's a forecast, we don't know. If we look at last year's budget, the same forecast was there, okay? And the budget before that, the same forecast was there. It always ends up going into our fund balance, and somehow, we don't go into the fund balance. I'm not excited about putting $4 million towards a budget and only putting $18,000 towards a fund balance. That doesn't really do it for me. But I'm coming to terms with the fact that we have to function today, and now we can plan for tomorrow. But the idea that, you know, city council has any real hand in reallocating the pennies for the four years that I've been here, I haven't been given that opportunity. Nobody, nobody gave me the keyboard on the spreadsheet and let me move everything around. So I guess it's, you know, the finance department are very good at what they do, and would probably take our direction if we gave them a direction to go in, but nobody seems to ever want to do that. So I'm going to be in support of the budget under protest, but I will support it.
Councilwoman McDermott?
Thank you, Council President. So, you know, I want to kind of build up on what my colleague said. There's a lot of things in this budget that do give me heartburn that I brought up earlier, in particular, some of the pay tie bars that we're using, you know, one-time funding to have pretty significant pay increases in terms of some of our, you know, employee pay, not the, not the public safety piece. But I do have some heartburn over that. I would like to see, it was brought up at the budget study sessions about the LOCC and having, you know, the LOCC meet again, and I believe that's something that they can do on odd years, correct? Not on an even year, so this would be the year in 2023 to have them do it. You know, there's some things I have, what Councilwoman Rukowski said about the limited fund balance addition as well. I'm always a supporter of having more resources for public health and mental health in budgets, you know, potentially starting in the future. We got to discuss how we would want to fund this, but a public health department for our residents in our community to be proactive and not reactive about people's public health and people's well-being and their overall wellness. And there's a lot of good stuff in this budget. We've heard for years that we sold our leaf pickup trucks to Livonia, and isn't it a shame? And so now we're giving residents what they want, the opportunity to have curbside leaf pickup back, and that's something that, when you go door after door after door, people say they want. And even if you, and I've done this to folks at the doors, if you give them the opportunity to say, on average, do you want about $17.50 of your taxpayer dollars back? That's not for, 17.50 for your winter and 17.50 for your summer. That's on average about what folks would get if we rolled back the sanitation millage half a mil. Some would get a little more if you live in a bigger property that has higher taxable values, some would get a little less if you live in a smaller ranch home like I do on Forest Street. But pretty much overwhelmingly, except for the folks that are, you know, share their concerns about their leaves blowing all over, their neighbors' leaves blowing all over, it's pretty overwhelming that people want the leaf pickup program back. And we heard for many years, isn't it a shame that Westland sold their trucks to the city of Livonia? Well, we're not bringing the leaf pickup back and not having to get into the truck game and have a big expensive fleet of trucks like we used to with the leaf backing trucks for leaf pickup. And yes, we are doing four or five different kind of trial runs to see what's going to work best where for the future. And if it turns out that none of them work, then maybe we don't do leaf pickup next year, and if it turns out we have two or three options that really work, we bring them back next year. But one thing I do know, when we witnessed the Bailey Center closing, when we witnessed some of our city services go away, we finally have an opportunity here with leaf pickup to have a value-added service for the residents come back. And we've heard from a lot of residents over the years that we've lost city services. We've heard that, not just with leaf pickup, not just with the Bailey Center, but on other items as well. And we finally have an opportunity, and I know that not all of you will benefit from this. Some of you live in an apartment, or a condo, or a homeowners association like Councilwoman Sampe does, and you won't get that benefit, and I'm sorry that you won't, just like with curbside recycling and some of the other programs as well. But we've heard for years, isn't it a shame we sold the trucks to Livonia? Isn't it a shame the city has taken away some services that we enjoyed for many years? We're finally giving you the opportunity to add that back, and that is something I do support in this budget. Another thing is that public safety piece. I mean, again, yes, we have to have a long-term sustained funding source for that, but our firefighters, our police officers are not just numbers on a page. They are human beings to do an incredibly dangerous, incredibly stressful, and incredibly taxing job. Something that is far more taxing than me sitting on a phone all day interviewing candidates for housekeeper positions or, you know, corporate accounting positions. And they do something that is very dangerous. And we have put ourselves through cuts, through attrition, through negotiating with the unions. For the better part of a decade, we have chiseled away at contracts and at staffing, and it's time that we start building back up. And this budget gives us an opportunity to build back up, not only for the men and women who are working and serving us currently in our police and fire, but also to recruit and retain future employees, so they're not coming in here using us as a training ground and then contract shopping somewhere else, where they can have half the run volume and get more pay. So that's something that I support in this budget as well. There's, you know, a capital improvement plan that's going to continue our neighborhood makeover program and continue to make key investments in our neighborhoods, on our roads, on our water and sewer infrastructure as well that is, that is in this budget. So, yes, we have to have a conversation about revenue. Yes, we have to have a conversation about how we're spending, how money is being allocated, should the LOCC meet. We have to have a conversation about savings that we can provide to taxpayers. A big area of savings is folks' water bills and having a water tower study. So I don't ever want to say that there's a magic fix, and I don't think any politician or elected official should say that there's a magic fix to save you money on your water bill, but that's why we have to have the study about a water tower, to look at, can we save people money, as has been brought up time and again by folks, you know, here in this audience, by some of us here on council. It's been brought up for several years by several council members. I know Councilman Hersberg has brought it up, I think, at least each of the last three budget study sessions. So we have to look at a savings in that regard. We have to look at, you know, potential savings on the library millage, and is there an opportunity for a rollback there? So we can't just be talking about spending. We do have to have the conversation, when inflation is running hot like this, about potentially saving folks money as well, and about being, you know, fiscally prudent on some things. But I just think at the end of the day, we've heard from residents about how the city has taken away services. The city closed the Bailey Center. The city sold the leaf pickup trucks to Livonia. Things that I remember 20 years ago, the city of Westland used to offer me, and now I'm paying higher taxes for less services. And we have an opportunity through this budget to have some value-added services that people have been asking for, for quite some time, to come back. And, you know, again, some of it may work out in the long run, some of it we may have to make some tweaks and adjustments in and some changes in, but I will be in support of this budget, and I do think that we have to have a long-term conversation for the financial health of the city and for potentially saving taxpayers money on some of these other things, whether it's a public health and safety millage, whether it's the water tower study session, any potential millage rollbacks related to the library millage. But I think that in this budget, the good outweighs the bad. And the last thing that I will say, and this is something that Councilwoman Rukowski did bring up, if you go back and go to cityofwestland.com, and you can go back, I believe, as far as the 2015, 2016 budget on the website, maybe even a little further, but if you look at the projections in those budgets, the 1516 budget, the 1617 budget, the 1718 budget, the 1819 budget, and you go to this year, you go to last year, and this year, and the next year, we were projected in conservative forecasts by our finance team to be in the hole, $2, $3, $4, $5 million once we reached 2022, 2023, 2024, and we're not in the hole. Now, part of that is because this year, we have some one-time money, taxpayer money that came from the federal government as a part of the American Rescue Plan, and, you know, some of that is just because the city council and the administration have made the necessary changes, so we're not in that hole, so that we don't have those projected shortfalls. So I get it, I understand the heartburn and the animus about one-time money, and we do have to have a plan moving forward to deal with that, but I think that there is more good than bad in this budget and things that people have been asking for, for years, to come back in the city or to have value-added services. And so for that, I will be in support of this, and I just want to thank the finance team, Steve and Dan, for their tireless work on this. They, they put in a lot of work, and all the department heads who've submitted their budgets to us and put in more than a day's work making this budget what it is. So thank you for the work you do.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion from Councilman Gabbell? It's your second item?
Thanks. I just want to comment a few things that I heard here. One, we do have control over what's in the budget and what's not. I did make recommendations that we not fund certain things, like a leaf pickup program, like a free sidewalk replacement program, but it's got to have a majority of the council to go along with those changes. We talk about trying to find efficiency. There's new positions created in this budget. When I asked for something as simple as an organization chart, so we can look to see where the, where we might be able to find some efficiencies within the city, I was either told, I was told, well, we don't have one. We're an $80 million business, and we don't have an organization chart? I find that hard to believe. I know that they exist in police and fire, yet we weren't provided those, even though they were requested. So to say that council does not control, that's the only thing we do control, is the budget. So to say we can't take things in and out of the budget is not an accurate statement, because we have in the past. Our state rep is sitting in the audience, and he knows we've taken things out of the budget in the past. There just wasn't a desire to do that. There wasn't a desire to really look at where we can improve some efficiencies, where we can find potentially some other money in other areas. There was no desire. Three meetings, we're done. Have a nice day. So I'm, obviously, I'm not supporting the budget. Thanks.
Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you, Pro Tim. I just wanted to address a couple of the comments relating to shortfalls and how shortfalls are normal in the forecast. They are normal in the forecast, but if you look back two to three years, we were still putting $1 million a year into the fund balance. This current year, we're going to put $16,000, next year, we're going to put $18,000. So if a new expense comes up, more than $18,000, it's not a balanced budget, okay? So it's more than just, oh, shortfalls are normal, it's more complicated than that. I wanted to expand upon the comments about the recycling millage. Yeah, leaf pickup is great. I'm not saying I agree with it or don't. I don't agree with how it's going to be paid for. When Mayor Wild asked council to put a tax levy on the ballot for recycling, I was hesitant, and I asked him right here, and he promised council, he said, we're going to levy it up to one mil, and if the cost is half that, then that's all we're going to levy. We're not going to spend all of the money. But now we're going to spend it all, and we're not even spending it on recycling. I've also advocated for expanding recycling to condos, some apartments, a lot of residents don't recycle. No, we're not going to use the money on that. We're going to use it for leaf pickup and bulk pickup, which I don't agree with, too. When we moved to this new system with the truck with the arms and everybody has cans, we did that to save money. But now we're going to pay for this new system, the old system, and start a brand-new leaf pickup program with the recycling money, I think is irresponsible, and I can't support that. If that one thing was different in the budget, I might, might be able to support the budget today, but that recycling millage, because of the language that was used on the ballot, it can be used for other things, but I think that was really misleading to the voters when they went out to vote for recycling, and I just think it's wrong. So I'd like to expand recycling, you know, in the future. And there was also comments about, you know, council doesn't make changes in the budget. We made a change to this budget right here when we voted on the budget, and that council member voted to add a police officer that year. So to say that we don't make changes, or we just look at it and vote yes, is another just totally ridiculous statement, but, and I wouldn't have even commented that, but I felt that those comments were somewhat of a personal attack towards me, which, and I never comment on comments from other council members. We're all entitled to our own opinion, and we vote, and we leave it at that, but to comment on somebody else's comments continuously, you know, that stuff has got to stop. So I won't be in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe?
Thank you. So there was a question about the recycling program. I just think of-
I just think if we can have some clarity, I don't know if this is to the mayor or administration, are you able to expand a little bit more? Who is it? Steve? Okay. No, actually, I don't think it would be. Can you explain a little bit more about how the rollout is going to be for the recycling program into condos and apartments in addition to the surveys, to maybe the feedback that you've gotten thus far?
So just briefly through the chair to Councilwoman Sampe, the recycling to condos and apartments isn't proposed in this current budget. We're researching all options for that. However, if you remember correctly, during the budget study session where we talked about sanitation, Devin Adams, our controller, talked about other alternatives for condos and apartments since they're not getting the leaf pickup service. So we're researching that right now. We'll be providing an update to council down the road here soon.
Also, thank you. And I don't know who can address this as well, too. I don't know, through the chair to Devin, if you're in control of the surveys for the leaf pickup program. Are you able to give us some numbers in terms of the response and then also to what it's been like?
Yes, absolutely. Through the chair, I believe Dan sent over a spreadsheet that gave a synopsis on that as part of one of the budget follow-up questions. If memory serves me correctly, I received, I believe we received about 4,000 responses with 91% in support.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification.
Counsel, excuse me, Pro Tem? What's that? Decline? Okay. Anything from councilmembers Hornbuckle or McDermott? Anything you, Councilman McDermott, you have one left, and?
No, I'm not.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Pro Tem Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, now I move to public comment. Everyone speaking for the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on councilmembers, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Thank you. Before I get into the topic that I came here for, some of the discussion here blows my mind, but to be civil, it would sound like before you approve a budget, it sounded like there were some problems that we probably should have went back to the table, come back again to vote it under protest. Blows my mind. I've been here for 40 years in Westland, and I had that sidewalk. I had a couple slabs replaced. I had to pay for it. So the free slabs, I didn't, I'm not, I never liked that because I had to pay. Same with the leaf pickup. We've been telling, we've been told it's free. It's not free, like it's been said. It's funny how this comes up during the budget discussion. It's not free. So why are we being lied to? Fix that problem, please. The ash trees, I had the Emerald Ash. I had a couple trees in my yard. So I had one in my property, one in a city's property, so those were gone. So that was a nice feature, but people, I hope that whoever paid for that, the people that didn't have the ash, didn't have to pay for it. Same thing with the leaf pickup. I have no trees in my yard no more, and so why should I have to pay for somebody else's leaf pickups? I live on a lighted street. For years and years and years, it was free. Somewhere along the line, I think we're doing Mayor Thomas's tenure, he, now we have to pay for street lighting. So things that used to be free, you're getting all this extra money from me. So enough of that. To get to the point that I wanted to come, make coming here was the water, the recent water boil water advisory, even though it didn't affect me, it kind of shook me up a little bit. I think, since I've been here, I don't think I've ever had a boil water that I know of. Fortunately, we have this Nixal alert, and I can get alerted when this kind of stuff happens. So I appreciate the Nixal alert. Unfortunately, I never got alerted when it was turned off. You know, now is it safe? Why not? I think we could do a better job with the Nixal alerts. We need to, people in the city of Wayne that I know didn't even know we had a boil water advisory in their, in their location, too, so they were drinking this stuff. So one of the questions I think we need to ask from the GLWA is to, are they flushing the water? Like, when we get our water, water line replaced, you know, those, the hydrants are opened up, you're letting all that bad stuff out. Are they letting this bad stuff out now after they get these pumps replaced or fixed or the water, electricity going or whatever?
Thank, thank you, sir.
Cause that slowdown?
Thank you. All right, anybody on my right? Sir?
I want to know why you're not acceptable also. I'll be sure to get you back.
All right, sir. All right, sir. Thank you.
Edward Pruitt here. I want to speak on a few things. I had a whole different train of thought, but after hearing all the discussions on the budget, I'm concerned about a few things. There's a saying that says, eat the meat and spit out the bones. And what I've heard today from city council is, not only did you tell the community to eat the meat, you shoved the bones down their throat. We are sitting in a position where there's a potential tax increase that could come upon the residents. Some call it millages. Some say, let's look at other funding. But the reality is, our community is going to suffer with this continuous irresponsible spending. Councilwoman Sampe tried to rationalize the irresponsible spending. Councilwoman Rastowski.
Rukowski.
Rukowski, thank you. She ended up saying that there aren't budget amendments that can be done. But the reality is, you can do it. You're the checks and balances. Even today, you could have voted no instead of saying, oh, I'm going to do it in protest. Do your job. I am concerned about these for the community. These tax increases are not necessary. We had Councilman McDermott say that we should have been projected to be about $4 million in the hole. Well, they used $4 million of our funds to support it. Stop pulling the wool over the people's eyes. Tell them the truth. Quit trying to placate this. I mean, this is disturbing. This is extremely. Councilwoman Rukowski said there were no real suggestions made. Well, I was at a budget session when Councilman Godbout asked questions, and Council President Hart told him to stop, told him to hold all of his questions to the end. I'm a community advocate, and I believe that truth must be told. You basically said that Councilman Godbout lied. He did not. He tried. We have to be truthful to the people. What's happening here is not okay, and this is not representative of the people.
Coming back to my left. Sir?
Happy Pride. So I am sure you all are aware of our last dog adoption that we had a few months ago. So next month, July the 15th, we are going to have our second huge dog adoption. It's going to be at Hometown Pets on Newburgh Road. I'm sure everybody's aware, you can either say we're next door to the funeral home or Michigan Humane, take your pick. We are going to be a little bit bigger than we did last year, so we are going to partner again with Detroit Animal Care and Control, but we are also going to be taking donations for blankets, dog beds, dog toys, things like that, that we're going to be splitting between Michigan Humane, Detroit Animal Care and Control, and a couple other smaller Westland-based dog rescues. So we're also going to be talking a lot more about fostering and helping people get resources to help, you know, if you want to start fostering, how resources to help you, or for food assistance if you are choosing to foster, and education regarding all of that. I'm sure, as everybody is aware, that both Michigan Humane as well as literally every single shelter in this state is overrun with dogs right now. Dogs, cats, bunnies, birds, ferrets, you name it. So I cannot stress enough that if you can open your home at any point to fostering a dog, even for a small amount of time, I guarantee that you are going to save lives. That's really all I have, everybody. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Coming back to my right. Sir? Oh, not a problem.
I got to watch my time this time. Good evening.
Evening.
I wasn't going to talk tonight, but seeing what I heard, I should say, seeing what I seen and hearing what I heard, I was compelled. Former speaker said a lot of what I'm going to reaffirm that he said. You are not acting de jure. You took on this job as councilmen and councilwomen to make the tough decisions, the hard, inconvenient decisions, and not be an apologist about what you can't do. Who came up with this tie bar contract? City attorney? I'm not asking, this is rhetorical. That should be destroyed as being unconstitutional. All I hear is apologies and taking offense as to what somebody else said. You're rubber stamping. People are upset. Oh, by the way, I introduce myself, Ron Sasek. As it says on the primary ballot, Ronald J. Sasek for mayor. Where is the leadership on the dais? It's nonexistent. But I will say this, Councilman Goodbot, you are a de jure officer occupying a de jure office, and he's on the ballot, too, for the primary. This is ridiculous. This is absolutely stunning that you can't change a budget because nobody proposed one. If I ask, where's the money going from? Doesn't mean I have to come up with the change. You come up with the change. You're not doing your job. And if you don't think $20,000 isn't enough, resign. Give it to somebody else to make the hard decisions. The tenor of this room, the few times I've been here, is very jovial and party-like atmosphere at the beginning. When everybody gets their photo op, they leave, the concerned citizens stay here, and then the clown show starts. And it continues. I'm running for mayor on the primary to help fix that. And it won't be pretty if I get on the primary, if I win the primary and I win the election. And I can guarantee that to the citizens that will vote for me. It won't be pretty, but I will do my darndest to fix this. Why did Westland sell the leaf pickup trucks? Were you in on that deal? And I go back to the tie bar contract. Oh, and there's also mention that the city of Westland is a defendant in two lawsuits.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Your time's up.
But under the Michigan Gepala laws, you won't be able to find out about it.
All right, is there anybody on my left? Ma'am?
Mayor. The rest of y'all just having this time up there. This is the last week for school. I'll tell you again, I got four great grandbabies that play in front of my house, and I'm going to ask one more time. Or, no, not, this won't be the last time. I'll come back every two weeks to ask for a police patrol in my neighborhood more often than every once in a great while, every once, every two, three, four days. You may not think it's important, but I have grandbabies down there. These people are speeding. It's supposed to be a 25 mile an hour speed limit. That's two dogs going fast in a residential neighborhood. I don't care what you say. I don't even do 25. You've got speed control on Henry Rough that lights up when you hit 22 miles an hour. Henry Rough between Van Born and Michigan Avenue. Then on my street, Julius Boulevard, the longest whip going through Annapolis Park, it's 25 miles an hour. They use it as a drag strip. One more time, please give us police patrol during the early morning hours and like 5 to 7 o'clock in the evening, because that's when they're speeding through there. They off of work, they trying to get home. I want me a cocktail, too, but I'm watching for kids. I don't want my babies hit. Something happens to one of my grandkids because we don't have protection down there? I'm coming after y'all. I really am. None of you will survive an election after I finish. Not on that end, you won't. That's all I got to say. I'm not threatening. That's a promise.
All right, coming back to my right.
She is going to dedicate her three minutes to me, if that's okay with the council?
Say again?
She's going to dedicate her three minutes to me?
We don't allow yielding of time.
Will she be able to come up?
She can come up and speak herself, yes.
All right. Good evening. I have lived in Westland for six years. My girlfriend Brianna has recently moved in with me less than a year ago. We are here today to voice our concerns, fears, and struggles we've been living with for quite some time. Since purchasing my home in 2017, I have always felt targeted and unwelcome by two of my neighbors, both of whom very close friends. Purchasing the house at 22, I'm sure me being marginally younger, living in between two older neighbors, may have been off-putting. After moving in, I quickly received constant complaints, some to my face, threatening notes posted on the door, mostly complaints to the city. Bri and I have gotten to know the city very well through all of these complaints, most of which the city has been very transparent, saying that we are doing nothing wrong. These are just nitpicky things that pose no issue. When the city tells us we are violating a rule, that must be enforced. We always accommodate. I've dealt with constant complaints for six years, those I can handle. While they may be annoying at times, I don't see those as anything more than a typical neighbor conflict. Unfortunately, within the last year, our home has become unlivable. In June of 2022, I arrived home from work at 3:00 a.m. I worked four jobs in that particular day. I was overworked, fell asleep as soon as I got home. Unfortunately, this was after I let my dog outside. I didn't wake up until an hour later. Apparently during that time, my dog was barking. I completely understand that must have been annoying to the neighbors, and I am truly sorry I made that mistake. I did not maliciously leave her outside to bark. I simply fell asleep the moment I sat down. As soon as I woke up an hour later, I let her in. Since this incident, our house has been a prison. The following day on Father's Day, I was embarrassingly cussed out by one of the neighbors, received a very explicit and detailed threat on how he was going to break into our home and murder us. I remained silent the entire time, simply apologized after the rant. I want to stress I understand the frustration I must have caused by leaving my dog out for that hour. I was hoping this was just letting off steam. Unfortunately, here we are one year later, and this is a daily struggle Bri and I have to live with. If we are alone outside, we get cussed at, yelled at, and threatened. Bri and I both take our Christian faith very seriously, and because of this, and while some may perceive us to be weak or doormats to walk over, through lots of prayer and guidance, we have come to the conclusion that not saying anything in return is the way God wants us to handle this. So we have never engaged in conversation or yelling back in defense. If he sees us outside, we duck our heads, head straight in our home, and take our verbal punishment without retaliation. I understand that may make us look like easy-picking victims. Many of us told us we need to fight back and stand up for ourselves. However, we didn't, we don't see the good that can come from retaliating or yelling back. We are convinced that this is how God wants us to handle the situation, and we will not compromise our faith on it. In attempt to put an end to this, we did have the police go and talk to the neighbors last year to tell them to leave us alone. Unfortunately, that made the harassment even worse. We have endured bricks being thrown through our window, our yard has been vandalized, dog poop has been smeared across our home, and our cars have been broken into, just to name some of the incidents.
Okay. Oh, I'll let her stop.
We have some strong reasons to believe that his death threats are not empty and could lead to us being a casualty. Sadly, through our many trips to the police station to report these incidents, we are constantly told the same thing, nothing can be done until he actually puts his hands on us. We have filed for a PPO, but nothing has been approved yet, and for a year, we have had to plan where, when we do our yard work, leave for work, or even pull up to our driveway when we think he will not be home or outside. when we think he will not be home or outside. Leisurely hanging out in our yard is not, is nonexistent for us. We literally live in the fear of going outside of our home on a daily basis. We desperately want to move away from the situation, but I'm sure as many of you are aware, it is not an easy time to purchase a new home. We are hoping by next year, we will be able to do this. But suffering in this situation for another year of abuse is destroying our lives, and if I may add, our mental health. So we are here today as a last resort. We feel the system has failed us. While I do not know what or if any action can be taken, this is just another cry for help from us in hopes that someone can help fix our situation. The neighbors may be able to say that we have a dog that barks when she sees someone near our home. That is true. While we take pride in how our yard looks, they can still claim they don't like the way we have it. They're entitled to that opinion. But at the end of the day, none of our neighbors can ever claim we have said anything hateful or done any actions in retaliation to theirs. We owe that all to our faith in God. We thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you. Chief, can I ask you to get involved with them, please?
Yeah, he was sticking around.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief. All right, coming to my left. All right, coming back to the right.
Josh Powell, Westland resident, water tower advocate. I was, I did want to point out that the boil water advisory is also another, would be another benefit of having a water tower as we would have a backup supply to keep that from being an issue. That wasn't the main reason I wanted to talk. I was concerned a little bit about the budget because while I was researching some of the budget forecasts, I didn't see anywhere where they took into the account that our population is falling. We've lost 2.65% according to the census since 2020, and we're forecasted to lose another 0.89% annually in population until 2025 at least, according to the census. I was wondering if that was taken into account for the budget forecast and if anything can or is being planned to help remediate that. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in the audience?
Hello again. I guess my first thought is, I actually asked some questions that I felt I was explained what was on the agenda, but I don't know that I was explained, I don't know that, I did not feel that my questions were answered. I just want to share that, that of my questions, I was told, okay, I asked what it was, and I was told, well, that's what it was. And that's not really an answer from the explanation. So I just want to, that did kind of bother me a little bit. And to several people's points, I keep hearing that the possible answer to the fund, everything being funded for on and on, would be a millage. And I know that most people know that millage is our taxes, an increase in taxes, an increase in property taxes. I mean, so that, so to hear that we're actually looking to just maybe go deeper in the pockets does concern, and I hope it makes it uneasy to actually have said, yes, we're gonna pass this, because I, as working in a corporation for years and years and years, and actually working as a business coach, helping people produce businesses that are thriving, you wouldn't pass a budget that you can't say that what you're gonna do in that. You just, you just don't. And even in my household, you have what we call, you have to have a, you gotta know how you're gonna pay for things. You don't, you don't say yes to the fancy car or the boat unless you know how you're doing. You know, even if there's a windfall, no, we don't do that. So I wanted to share that. And then I just wanted to take a minute because today's the 29th anniversary memorial of my father's passing. And I just, I felt, I don't know why I felt compelled to say something today. He died of colon cancer 29 years ago, never got to see me married. And I just, when I think about his passing, there are a couple of things I always think about is cancer, you know. I don't use the word, so I'll just say cancer does not, cancer stinks. Cancer is not fun for anybody, so I encourage people to take care of their health. Eat well, take care, you know, exercise, do the things you need to do so that you are actually taking care of your health. And then adding into that the mental health. My dad carried his stress in his stomach, in his gut. And that's a really sad place to be when you have a, when you're, when you are upset about things or you can't speak about things. And even I think about this, it's like, I don't want to be afraid to say, and I don't want to envy anyone to be afraid to talk about a subject that might be like uneasy. Like, you know, I don't want to talk about the fact that, you know, you might not pass a budget that affects someone's salary. It's like, we've got to be able to talk about all subjects and all things, because that is one of the things that actually is relieving of stress. So I just, encouragement that everybody take that time and just be, let's get around a table, I'm thinking of some of the other people. Let's get around a table and talk about these things so that we don't get into these escalated and elevated sad situations. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
Thank you, Council President. Kevin Coleman, State Representative. Just wanted to take a moment and thank you for all your work. I know that approving a budget is not easy. We're still working through ours at the state level. I told you when I came back I'd have good news about the budget. I'll be honest with you, I don't. We are still working through the process. But I did want to take this opportunity to invite anybody listening, watching, or anybody here today to our next Coffee Hour. It's always the second Monday of every month at 9:00 a.m., and it's gonna be at Homestead Kitchen right here in Westland, 8036 North Wayne Road. I'll be joined by our special guest, Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, who always joins us and provides updates from Wayne County, which are very interesting and informative. We've had a good group the last couple of months, so I would love to see more folks participate and join us if they're available. Also, if you want to reach me, our office line in Lansing is 517-373-2275. Our email is kevincoleman@house, excuse me, @house.mi.gov. And I always give out my cell phone number, 734-751-6321. Feel free to give me a call. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
I'm not really good. Not always comfortable speaking in front of people, but the last couple here, the Christians that gave their statement, it gave me a sign. I've been racking my brain all week with all the issues going on with the election and all that stuff. I'm not gonna say anything mean. And I've been thinking all week, and I just wrote a prayer. And I wanna, I wanna read that. "I respect all faiths. I'm a Christian, my name's Dana. I've been a resident most of my life and just started to get involved." And this quote I want to go through is from a Bible study I had yesterday. "Not until we have become humble and teachable, standing in awe of God's holiness and sovereignty, acknowledging our own littleness, distrusting our own thoughts, and willing to have our minds turned upside down, can divine wisdom become ours." If you'd like to bow your head, that's fine. If not, that's okay too. Dear Heavenly Father, I ask and pray for your divine intervention and that you remind us all of who you are. Help us to let go of things out of our control and to continue to share truth and love, understanding, grace, mercy, and forgiveness. Continue to humble our actions, thoughts, and our hearts and minds in everything we do. Help us to use our words and actions carefully and that we all learn to communicate with love, understanding, honesty, and truth. I ask and pray that you provide the wisdom, integrity, knowledge, and grace to our leaders in government and to those candidates running for office. Remind them that it is you who has placed them in their positions and have given them the care of your most precious gift, your creation. Help them to make the decisions that align with your plan, accomplish your will, and that puts the needs of our families, our citizens, and communities above their own. I pray that you purify and cleanse our hearts and that you provide the tools we need to move forward for you, our families, and our communities. As you said in Ephesians 3:20 through 21, "Now to him who is able to do above and beyond all that we ask or think according to the power that works in us, to him be glory in the church and in Christ Jesus to all generations forever and ever." And 2 Chronicles 7:14, "If my people who are called by my name humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and heal their land. In your precious son's name, King Jesus, amen." Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? All right, we'll close comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, President Hart. That makes me feel well to go after such a beautiful prayer. So thank you to that young lady for saying some nice things. Just want to go off to a couple of things. I've obviously had a lot of comments tonight, but I want to talk about some of the things that came up in the audience tonight. So first and foremost to Lori, I appreciate those comments, and I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, not just your street, but when I'm out talking to folks, that's all I hear, people speeding up and down the streets. Not to put my traffic sergeant on the spot, but our traffic sergeant is in the audience, and I'm hoping he'll approach you after and talk to you briefly about some of the, maybe the times that you see folks out there speeding up and down. Also, we, the administration's gonna be bringing forth some solutions down the road here too on a pilot program I can't wait to talk about. And we might just start in your neighborhood. Brianna, and I didn't catch that gentleman's name. I'll have our police chief come speak with you after. I think you guys sent me an email in my office within the last few days. Was that you guys sent an email? Okay, there was another issue with the dog barking then. But please, if you could stay a few minutes after and speak with my police chief, and we'll try to get to the bottom of it for you, okay? Also, real quick, the word millage has been brought up a lot tonight. Various people have brought it up. I just want to let the folks at home know. The administration is not asking or proposing any new millages right now. So there's no taxes increase, no tax increases in this budget, no millage increases in this budget. I said that at the beginning of my comments on the budget. So I just want to be sure that the folks at home watching and the folks in the audience know there are no millage increases or tax increases, nor are we proposing any. I want to thank the council for your support on the three-year balanced budget. I want to thank the finance team who I talked about recently. They're rock stars, man. These guys are the best in the business. It's not just the two that were mentioned, Devin Adams, who stepped out. He's a big part of it. They got a lot of folks that work in a department that work daily, not just on the budget, but the audit. And they work with the water billing and a lot of other very important tasks in our community. So thank you to your team, Steve and Dan. Appreciate your guys' efforts on that. And then as far as some of the initiatives, I know certain council members beat up a few of my initiatives. Doesn't surprise me, but I'll be sure to explain to the residents in further detail about the initiatives that we laid out in this budget and how we're going to be rolling those out here soon. The Westland Police Officers Association, the Lieutenants and Sergeants Association, and our Westland Professional Firefighters Contracts have been negotiated and settled. I want to thank the negotiating teams and the city council for your support. Some of them are still in the audience, so thank you. I've seen them crazily texting people. I don't know if they're texting their union members, brothers and sisters, letting them know that the contract passed or if they're recruiting. I hope they're recruiting. I know they're recruiting, so thank you, guys. I want to thank everyone who contributed to the successful Memorial Day Parade this year, and thank you to all those who participated. It was a beautiful day to honor, remember all those who courageously gave all in the service of our country while defending the freedoms that we all cherish. The grounds looked fantastic over at the beautiful Westland Memorial Gardens, and all up and down the parade route looked amazing. So thank you to my chief of staff and our Department of Public Service for getting that parade route looking good. Congratulations to all the 2023 high school, college, high school and college graduates. I want to wish you all the best of luck in the future. We had the Officer of the Year Ceremony on Friday evening here at City Hall. Want to send a congratulations to our Officer of the Year, Andrew Teschendorf, and our K-9 Officer, Odin, for being awarded the Westland Police Officer of the Year. And congratulations to Officer Margaret Kelly for being awarded the first-ever Mayor's Excellence Award. Also, the Chiefs' challenge coins were presented to Lieutenant Cameron Sleep, Sergeant Shane Kozak, and Officer Michael Aldini. Many of the officers received recognitions for lifesaving awards, departmental citations, certificates of merit, certificates of merit and unit combinations. I was gonna chime in earlier when the discussion was going on with the police contracts, but I know many of my colleagues were at the award ceremony and watched the bravery that these men and women deal with every day. Up or down on body count, these guys are out there busting their butts to serve and protect our community. And former Mayor Wilder used to say this all the time, our catch the up, our catch the bad guy, staffs up against anybody. These men and women do an incredible job daily, and they deserve everything that we gave them tonight. Want to send a congratulations to our new police chief, Kyle Dolly, for his promotion to police chief. Our new deputy chief, Robert Wilke, for his promotion to deputy chief. John Gaddy for his promotion to lieutenant. And Eric Munson for his promotion to sergeant. I want to welcome our three new hires tonight, Hannah Furnas, Christopher Garrick, and Caitlin Makitis. The reason I said it like that is because I was worried I was gonna butcher her name real. So I said it about 50 times to our city clerk and council president, Makitis, Makitis. So I said it right. Real quick, I'm gonna pull up my phone for this one because our traffic sergeant asked that I share that the Westland Police Youth Academy is starting up here soon. It's a great program. The application process is going on right now. They're available online on the City of Westland website or at the front desk of the police department. Applications are due on Monday, June 26. If you have questions on this, you can call Brandon Paris at 734-722-9633 or email him at bparris@wlpd.net. The academy is a great academy. It's a one-week class or academy from Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. beginning July 17, 2023. It's open to all Wayne Westland High School students or high school students residing within the city of Westland. They learn everything from K-9 to SWAT, court functions, TASER, traffic stops, evidence technicians, emergency vehicle operations. There's also a tour of the Schoolcraft College Academy. So I know they're putting their recruiting hats on and they want to make sure to try to get some of these young folks as they come out of college. Getting a lot of question about the beautiful, colorful play structure over at Tatten Park, which is the Mission to Mars. So I'm here to provide an update tonight. The Mission to Mars construction is still a couple of weeks away. We were hoping to have it done by Memorial Day weekend. We did get a lot of rain. I know it doesn't look like it with the grass being so brown out there, but we got a lot of rain in April, so did put our timeline back a little bit. All the structures are up, and the installers are focusing on the rubber pour-in-place safety surfacing. This safety surfacing will replace the wood fiber mulch from the past and create a barrier-free environment for children of all abilities. Once we have a timeline on the surfacing completion, we'll be sure to update the community on the opening day for the highly anticipated Mission to Mars project. Want to invite the residents to join me in our Kickoff to Summer Community Summit on Wednesday, June 14, at 5:30 p.m. at Central City Park, located at 1901 North Carlson. There's gonna be free hot dogs, chips, and water for everyone. We will have face painting, a DJ. We're adding bounce houses this year since we don't know for sure if our beautiful play structure will be open, so I asked that we add some bounce houses. There's gonna be a slushy company will also be in attendance, and they're giving away free slushies to the first 500 kids at the event. At 7:00 p.m., we will be showing Pixar's Inside Out on the big screen, and I'll be providing popcorn for all the movie, for all the kids. So make sure to come on on Wednesday, June 14, at 5:30 for our annual Kickoff to Summer event. Pickleball was mentioned earlier, so I want to mention that the Westland Parks and Recreation's first co-ed competitive pickleball tournament will take place this Sunday, June 11, starting at 1:00 p.m. at Carrato Park, located at the corner of Gladys and Flamingo. This co-ed tournament will be the first for our city, and we are truly excited to showcase these popular pickleball courts at Carrato Park. Registration for the competitive tournament closes Wednesday, June 7, so that's in two days from now. But if you aren't quite ready for the competitive tournament, there is a recreational tournament that has been scheduled for Saturday, June 24, starting at 11:00 a.m. If you're interested in signing up for either the tournament, please go to cityofwestland.com and sign up on the new recreation portal or call the Parks Department at 734-722-7620. Registration closes for the recreational tournament on Wednesday, June 21. I'm kind of shocked that this guy wasn't here tonight, but recently my team met with the Westland mall owners. Woo-hoo, finally. We're gonna be having a follow-up meeting tomorrow, actually. The first meeting was very, very productive. I was very excited to meet with Namdar and their asset management group. Very productive meeting, and we're looking forward to the follow-up here tomorrow. Just want to let folks know too, at home know as well, we do meet with mall management regularly, the mall management that manages our mall. The ownership group is based in New York City, so obviously it's, we don't meet with them on a regular basis. them on a regular basis. So when we do get a chance to meet with them, as has been mentioned before, it's a big opportunity, so. Aubrey Marab, who is our Chief Business Development Officer, and I did a video explaining all the new developments along Ford Road. I've been getting a lot of questions in my office on social media, getting pulled aside at community events, like what's going on here at Ford and Carlson, what's going on down here just past Newburgh. So please visit our cable channel for the improvements happening along our Ford Road corridor. It's also being aired on our Facebook page and also on YouTube, so be sure to share that with the community as well. Cancer was brought up tonight as well, I agree. We have the Relay for Life kickoff event this Saturday, June 10 at 11:00 a.m., and it runs until midnight. This event will take place at the Westland Farmers Market located at 1901 North Carlson Street. The Relay for Life movement is dedicated in helping communities attack cancer through funds donated, time given, or awareness raised, so please come out in the support fighting against cancer. They did change the time this year, it just goes till midnight this year. Usually it's a 24-hour fundraiser, but we'll be out there till midnight. Lastly, the All-American Wayne Road Cruise is also this Saturday, June 10. Classic car and hot rod cruise from Joy Road to Glenwood. There is construction again this year, no kidding, but I've been told that 75% of the route will have great pavement, and many locations have not been used in the past. So be sure to check out our cityofwestland.com. Also, go online if you're a classic car guru and want to know about the All-American Cruise that's going on this Saturday. And I do have two more quick things, some birthday shout-outs. For some reason, my chief of staff seems to draw the low card. We had a study session on his 20th anniversary with his wife. Marriage, that was recently, and now tonight's his son, Jack, or excuse me, Michael Jr., Michael Reddy Jr.'s 21st birthday, so thank you for always toughening it out and being heard for that. And then Jackie's going to hate me, but Jackie in my office is turning the big 6-0 on Wednesday. Is it Wednesday, June 8, Steve? Wednesday, June 8? No, Thursday, June 8. Yep, she's going to kill me, but we love her and we couldn't. I told her I was going to do it. I told her I was going to do it. So no, Jackie and Shannon do a fantastic job in our office, and you know, we're going to be celebrating here on Thursday, so if you guys are inclined, stop by the office or send her some good birthday wishes. Thank you.
All set. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Yes, only that there's no way I can get him out of the trouble if he's not.
I would agree, that's well beyond your scope, sir. Thank you. We'll begin council comments this evening with Councilman Godbell.
I've said quite a bit tonight, so I'll try and keep this brief. First, I'd like to congratulate the firefighter scholarship award recipients, Trinity, Madison, Jordan, DeKayla, and Buster. And I'm sure it was a tough decision on which ones to give scholarships to, but thank you to the fire department for continuing those scholarships. They mean a lot to those students. They mean a lot to the community, so again, thank you for that. The only thing I wanted to say is, you know, we've heard comments that, well, we can't control what's here or what's there. That's exactly what we should be and could and have done in the past. It was brought up that, well, we've had future deficits for years projected out, and it's true, okay? But we found ways by looking in the budget itself to overcome those shortfalls in those preceding years. We didn't have the benefit in a lot of those cases of $5.8 million from last year's budget. 5.8 last year, $4 million this year, $9 million that's spread out over a few years to balance the budget. And before you leave, Dan, I just want to say thank you to the finance department. They do a great job, okay? This is not a finance department versus council issue. This is, because the finance department can only do what the administration tells them to put in the budget, okay? They've got to crunch the numbers. They've got to make the numbers work. And I'm sure it's extremely difficult to do that, and I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done on the budget. You know, you and Steve. Steve had to go, you know, save himself from, you know, the mayor's comments, so, but again, thanks, Dan. It's much appreciated. So, you know, $9 million, or close to nine, actually 9.8, close to $10 million that we're using that in three more years, we're in the hole again. So that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Councilman Hertzberg.
Thanks, Council President, and thanks, council, for that final discussion on the budget. It just goes to show that we could have maybe had another meeting, but you know, I think it's the same every year. We could always use another meeting, and the discussion would never end because we just, we all have different opinions and want to see different things, but I'm glad that we got through it, it's passed, and we're going to move forward into the next year's budget, hopefully with some of the suggestions and stuff that came up from council members, try to get those into next year. And I know that was already addressed because you asked the mayor about the recycling. I did get a suggestion or kind of complaint from a few residents about council comments about how, the suggestion was that some other cities' councils, they'll get an official list of events that they want to announce and they'll divvied up among council members. The complaint was basically that we're going down the dais for 45 minutes and we're all saying basically the same thing. And this is a business meeting. We should be discussing proposals, changes, things like that, not going down the list. So just a thought if we want to move forward and do that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Thank you for everybody who provided their suggestions and feedback. For the couple in the back, I'm sorry to hear that you're going through an absolute terrible time with your neighbors there. You know, please feel free to reach out to myself or any one of us on council, too, in addition to staying after to talk with the chief. I mean, just for moral support, if nothing else, geez, that's really terrible, so I'm really sorry to hear that you guys have been going through that. So my apologies that you have two neighbors on either side that have boxed you in like that. Very sorry to hear that. I want to thank our Westland Fire Department for their firefighter scholarship, and I want to congratulate the recipients of that scholarship, including Trinity, Madison, Jordan, DeKayla, and of course, our friend Buster. Congratulations on receiving the firefighter scholarship. Your hard work and dedication really pays off, and you know, all the best not only to you, but all the best to the Wayne Memorial, John Glenn, the Bonny Churchill, and the Lutheran School, Lutheran High School graduates this year. We know that you recently finished up this week. Last week was your last week of school, so congratulations to all the graduates here from all the high schools here in the City of Westland. I want to thank Vic Barra, Councilwoman Pro Tem Andrea Rakowski, and everybody at the Bova Post, who was an integral part of putting together another successful Memorial Day Parade. Thank you for doing that, really appreciative of that, and it's really clear that a lot of people in our communities, evidenced by the attendance at the parade, are very appreciative of that as well. So thank you for all the hard work and many months that go into planning that and making it a possibility. I want to congratulate Officer Andrew Teschendorf for the Westland Police Department for his recognition of Officer of the Year, and all of the officers who got recognized for their bravery at the Westland Police Officers Award Ceremony. That's something that I got to attend and most of my colleagues here as well. It's really nice to be there and see all the officers get recognized for their heroism and their bravery as well. Want to say happy pride to everybody. It is the month of June, and that means it is Pride Month, so to all of our friends in the LGBTQI community, I wish you a happy pride, and I hope that you find tolerance and acceptance in this month. I hope that we can, you know, continue to do better in expanding equity and equality for folks in the LGBTQI community. I know here in the state of Michigan, we recently passed the Elliott Larson Act to include civil rights for folks in the LGBTQI community, and I think that that is really important, and just want to, again, say happy pride. And I hope that here, you know, in the future in Westland, maybe we can do what a lot of other communities are doing, have our own pride event here in the city. I think that'd be great for the community. Just a few more things here tonight. The water tower was brought up again. I think that that's something we're looking at exploring here as a council to do a water tower study session in any way that we can have, you know, some cost savings for the residents on their water bills. I think examining that would be really important, so thank you, Mr. Powell, for bringing that up again, and I would like to see us, you know, move forward, and I think we're looking at an ARPA subcommittee to potentially put some money towards that as well. I wanted to bring up just a few other items now that we're beyond the budget. I do want to let folks know, if you go to my council page at Councilman Mike McDermott, I put together almost 100-page review of the budget. It's a PowerPoint presentation that you're welcome to read through. A lot of good information was taken from our department heads, from Dan and Steve and Devin Adams. I want to thank them for all their work and the information that they put together, and I put a lot of that into the budget PowerPoint presentation, looked at a lot of our expenditures, our revenues, looked at a department-by-department breakdown of some of the new programs and initiatives. So you can go to my page at Councilman Mike McDermott and see a almost 100-page PowerPoint presentation that I put together discussing your 2023-2024 City of Westland budget. Another initiative that I want to, you know, talk about and hopefully we can get some traction moving forward on is the Citizen Oversight Board piece. We've had several people in the community talk about this, people who are in this audience, and you know, this is something I've been bringing up for the last four years. As I say every time, it's not about punishing the brave men and women who wear the badge in the police department, but it is about adding an added layer of accountability and transparency and giving our residents a voice. I know I've had some brief conversations with the chief about this and with some of my colleagues. I've sent that presentation that myself and State Senator Erica Geis put together and that I got some community feedback on. Would love to continue that conversation as well on the Oversight Board piece, and would also like to have a conversation regarding something that myself and Councilwoman Rakowski have been diligently working on for going on two years now, and that's the Responsible Contracting Ordinance. This is something that both of us kind of at the same time just happen to be really interested in and work in to schedule meetings with some of our friends in organized labor on, and we've collaborated on, and I'd like to see us move forward on a Responsible Contracting Ordinance so that we know that we're taking care of, you know, working-class people, making sure that when we go out for bid, we're going with a responsible bidder, not just the lowest bidder, but somebody who pays their employees a living wage, affords them good benefits, and doesn't have a history of workplace safety violations. So really excited to, you know, potentially move forward on that now that we're beyond the budget on that Responsible Contracting Ordinance. And think of the thousand things I have written down. The last thing I will say is congratulations to all of our officers who are newly hired into the City of Westland, including Officer Makitis, Officer Garrick, and Officer Furnas, and then congratulations on the promotions to Sergeant Munson, Lieutenant Gaddy, and then, of course, Deputy Chief Wilkie being newly minted as a deputy chief here in the City of Westland, and also to Chief Dolly, of course, on his promotion as well. And with that, if you need anything, as always, I can be reached at 734-890-2146 or on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott. Thank you and happy pride.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. A lot of things that I was going to talk about are covered, but it is June, so I'd like to recognize Pride Month in the City of Westland. We talked about our promotions and new hires, so congratulations. I won't go through the names. They've been listed probably 10 times already. The scholarship winners, it's great to see. I think it was 21,000, if I'm not mistaken. So just to recap, 21,000 was given to these individuals tonight, so thank you. I wanted to congratulate the class of 2023. So if you're heading off to college or the workforce or pursuing another opportunity, I encourage you to approach your future with ambition and passion. So I wanted to congratulate you and congratulate the parents and grandparents, too, because a lot of times they hold their hands through that process. Someone that wasn't mentioned, part of the Memorial Day Parade, or maybe he was, I was in the bathroom, is Dan Statchell, too. So he was one of our commentators, so with Councilwoman Rakowski, Council President Pro Tem Rakowski. So they do a nice job announcing the parade, so thank you very much for that, and Vic Barra and all that was part of the parade. We talked about the Officer of the Year. I think it's been talked about, so congratulations to Marja Kelly, K-9 Officer Andrew Teschendorf. We really appreciate you. And then I don't know if this has been talked about, the Relay for Life, I think Mayor talked about this, but I'll just kind of give you a secret that he will be in the Dunk Tank on Saturday at 12:30. So if you are interested, he's blushing. If you're interested, there's a special guest, i.e. mayor, out at the Dunk Tank this Saturday. So, I should I say it again? No. Okay, he said, no, that's enough. Yeah, it will be very, very fun. He said what? How much is it, he said? I think unlimited is $25, so. So you can keep on doing it over and over for... I said I'm going to call the Churchill High School baseball team. I already put out a group chat with my son's baseball team, so you might have some good players out there just knocking you down, so. And then one thing new that I was going to talk about really quickly is we had, at the budget session, myself and Councilwoman Rakowski was speaking with Barb Markham to expand some of our programming at our senior center. One of the things that we shared with her is a cardio drumming class, which is geared towards someone that would be just slightly under the age of the Friendship Center. So she's going to be putting together a cardio drumming class. It's kind of 35 to 50, and it's going to be a brand-new class. It is coed, so meals can join as well. It's drop-in pricing, it's pay-as-you-go, it's just $5 for the class, and then you just pay a $12 registration fee, which gets you the membership to the senior center as well, too. So we thought it would be fun to expand the programming. I really like doing different things in the city as well. So every Thursday at 5:30 at the Friendship Center off Newburgh and Ford Road, we're going to offer that class just for $5. So I wanted to kind of plug that. I'm just going to also address some of the things that were mentioned as well, too. Derek, thank you so much for mentioning about the dog fostering as well. If you have information, I'd be happy to share it on my Facebook page, so whatever you have. It sounds like Chief is going to get Ms. Wilson protected, so thanks, Chief, for addressing that. Thank you, Dana, in leading the prayer. It was beautiful, I appreciate that. I think we needed it tonight, to be honest with you. And then Brianna, I'm sorry, I didn't get your boyfriend's name, too. Dustin, thank you for sharing as well, too. I'll be around afterwards if you need to speak with anyone, I think it's been mentioned, but it sounds to me like you're going to have some support here on the dais, but also our police administration, too. I'm really sorry you have to go through that. That's no way to live, you're right, and it's not giving it up to God to say, well, hopefully he'll get us through. That's unacceptable. So we'll figure out a solution. We'll talk with our administration, our police administration, we'll figure out what we need to do, and I'm really sorry that you had to deal with that. Absolutely. So I think in terms of the agenda I spoke on, those items are ready, but our next meeting will be Monday, the 19th, at 7:00. And if you need to get ahold of me before then, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe is my personal Facebook page, you can reach out to me. Everyone, have a great night.
Thank you. Pro Tem?
All right.
I apologize. Councilman Hornbuckle, I am so sorry.
That's correct.
Oh, it's all right. I'm going to save you some time tonight, and I have nothing to add.
There you go. Pro Tem?